Can we pay your attention, please?
Oh, now it's on. Here we go. Sorry, we're not used to using mics over here. Good evening, folks. This is the Planning Board of Le Monster. I was going to call a meeting to honor. I would like to let start off my meeting as I usually do to let you know that the Planning Board is the Board of Permitted Uses. And what we mean by that is, over the years, the City Council, okay, has approved the complete set of ordinances. There have some been imported by the Planning Board, some are just historical here in the city. But we have a book that we follow, okay? And that book is given to developers when they want to come into the city. So if they meet all the requirements that were initiated and approved by the city, then it gets approved. The Board of Appeals is a Board of Non-approved Ordinances. So I just wanted to say to let your people know that we are governed by the ordinances in the city, okay? So a lot of times, we make judgments, but they're primarily based on the ordinances as written. So with that said, I'd like to call my first --
Hi. John.
Call my first public -- it's a first meeting. It's a continued open public hearing for a special permit in the floodplain of 68, 70, and 72 Pleasant Street, MAP 14, Parcel 19, 3, and 3A. Multifamily residential above floors with office on the first floor. Do you have a representative?
No. No, that's different. Do you -- can I make that motion to vote out?
No, not this one. Let's do his.
Trying to send this up so you can see it, but the plan during your patent as well sets up for the speed to get on the screen at home. For the record, Bill, handing in with hand again engineering. I think they can hear me with the mics. This project was --
Mike, for phone, please.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
We can't hear you, okay.
Yeah, you're gonna have to --
All right. For the record, Bill, handing in with hand again engineering. This project was proposed and brought through the planning board process some time ago for a special permit for some residential units, 22 units, with an office space on the first floor of this building. The site plan and special permit for those uses were approved. And at the time, we also needed a special permit for work within the floodplain. The floodplain mapping was being changed at the time that we did the original filing. All the calculations, all the cuts and fills and information relative to floodplain work, including compensation areas, was all calculated during the original permitting process utilizing the new floodplain information because it was made available, I believe, in 2022 or 2023. So that information, we were waiting for FEMA to basically enact those maps and make them official, and that was done on July 8th of this year. So what we're here to do basically tonight is to present essentially the same plans that we had presented before, which were approved. And then we basically -- the change in the plan is that we've added the date and the new FEMA mapping number of the firm panels that were utilized for this new official floodplain mapping. This will need to go in front of conservation as well, but we believe that the special permit aspect with the planning board has been satisfied this time.
Okay.
And Chair, for the record, there's one thing.
Yeah. Bill, you got it upside down.
I liked it better.
Can you turn it so the people -- we have our drawings here.
Sure.
Well, you came with a fancy one.
Chair, for the record, one thing. For this project, I just want to make it known that Dean Valier, a member who's called in on the phone, has signed off the affidavit that he has watched the July 22nd, 2024, and the August 19th, 2024 meetings, and he can vote accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's better.
Okay. So those are the only changes?
Right, Bill. Now, what -- could you please denote the changes that were made because of the new watershed program?
The only change that was made, just my turn?
You push the button.
Okay. The only change that was made on the plans was we did add the floodway line, which is the parallel to the brook. But the floodway and the floodplain are two separate pieces of information. The floodplain information is shown on the plans as it was previously because we anticipated the change to the new elevation in this area. And the only other change we made was the date of the floodplain mapping has been added to the notes in the plan. Aside from that, the plan remains exactly the same.
So that's it? Okay. So that's the regulatory floodway? That that's been added?
Correct. It's down towards the wetland line, towards the brook. There's no construction happening anywhere within the floodway versus the floodplain.
And there's no other changes to the footprint or the --
Nope. The buildings stay the same, parking, drainage, everything stayed the same. Nothing was changed.
So all our previous meetings, everything is the traffic and all that?
Correct.
Okay. So that makes it easy. So this is now, you're gonna go to conservation?
Yeah, when we get done here, we'll go to conservation and file with them and go through the same process that we typically would go for relative to work within buffer zones and floodplains, et cetera.
Okay. But we were set aside with the original plan, and we had to get the wetlands, the new floodplain taken care of, so.
Right, that's what we've done.
With that, I don't have any other questions. I'll open it up to any other board members.
Other than the public comments we're incorporating, correct?
Correct.
Right.
Yep, right.
Okay. I'll open it up to the audience. Do I have anyone in the audience that is concerned about 7072 Pleasant Street? I'll ask again. This is on 7072 Pleasant Street. Do I have anyone in the audience that have any questions? Is there any final time?
Can I just ask one question? I don't need to delay this.
You sure?
Can you remind me of the procedural history? We -- so this was before this is a site plan?
This was before you as a site plan and a special permit for use and a special permit for floodplain.
And we approved the site plan?
And you approved the site plan. And you approved the special permit for use?
And the special permit.
For the use, okay. This is for the floodplain?
So the only thing we had was the floodplain. So we're just waiting for that. So what we'll do is we can close this tonight.
I move to close the hearing.
Okay. I have a motion made and seconded to close the hearing. Do I have any further discussion? Here, we're on a call for the roll call.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Tom Kergnen.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
I make a motion to -- well, should we -- should we open? Yeah, can I make -- I'll make a motion to open the regular meeting?
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded to open the regular meeting. Roll call, please.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Tom Kergnen.
Here.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yes. Okay.
We're going to the break. We're gonna do the air notes.
We're gonna do the air notes.
Well, we want to do the minutes?
Yes. Minutes of previous meetings.
Can we take them together?
May 5th, 2025.
Can we take them together as one vote?
What's that?
Can we take them together as one vote?
Yes.
If so, then I move we approve the minutes of May 5th and 19th, 2025?
I have a motion made and seconded to approve the minutes for May 5th and May 19th, 2025. Do we have any additions, deletions, or corrections? Here, and I'll call for the roll call.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Tom Kergnen.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yes.
Thank you.
Here, and I for 1018 Lancaster Street, MAP 448, lots 1A and 1B. Just for folks to let know, this is -- these are lots that they consider approval not required. And this is primarily when somebody comes in and has a larger lot and they want to divide it for future use.
Hi. I'm -- hello?
Yes.
Hi. My name is Julian Votruba from New England Environmental Design, the engineering survey firm that created this plan. What we've done is there was a previous plan that was divided and signed by this board a few years ago, and we just modified the shape of the lots. We're not creating any new lots, we're just reshaping two lots. We need all the setbacks for the lots and lot area, frontage and lot area.
So what are you going to, Lot 1A, just transfer the property to, or creating 1B? Is that correct?
Yes, it's all one owner right now, and they've dividing, creating Lot 1A and Lot 1B, which were created, you can see the, it says old line to be abandoned.
Yeah.
The line used to go diagonally across the lot. They want to square it off.
Okay.
That's all we're changing.
Okay, so you're getting, okay. That's just a lot line, just a line change.
In the frontage on Lancaster Street?
Correct.
And the other one's 190?
Yeah.
I make a motion to endorse.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded to endorse. Roll call.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Tom Kergnen.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yes.
Thank you.
Here, and I for 875, 927, 881, 905, and 975, Merriam Avenue, MAP 261, lots 1 and 3.
This one did not have the legal, originally did not have the legal frontage.
Okay.
They had frontage, but no access on that frontage. And I believe the gentleman that's here has a different plan to show you, so I don't know if you want me to show you the original plan or if you want to see the one that he wants to propose.
All right.
Both of them, okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
The staff report that you guys --
Well, we're gonna have a reference, that's what.
-- is based off the original.
Gee, we're missing an easement. We should be put up on an easement. Yeah. We'll share it.
And for the record, I did get a legal opinion, just to back up my staff report, and the person who wrote it is the attorney, Mr. Justin Parata.
So this is the original one?
That's the original one.
Do you have the revised one?
Mr.?
I'm Steve Horstwalle, Killian Engineering Group. I have the revised plans right here.
Okay. Do you have copies of them?
I do.
So we can just know?
Sure. What this is? Okay. It would look like the frontage. This is Chick-fil-A. Landmark.
Sure.
Yeah. This is, and it fits here. Okay. What is the --
So I'm here representing Twin City Plaza Owner LLC for the application this evening in which the original lot is the entire plaza. It's comprised of two separate tax parcels today, and you recently know that Chick-fil-A was approved on one of the lots. And the owners came back to us and asked if we can track taxable parcels for Chick-fil-A because they wanted that written in their lease. So originally, we came for the first plan, which was a full development lot area for Chick-fil-A, so that that would be the lot dedicated to them. There was deeded access to Merriam through one of the accessways adjacent to the property. And that's what we had for access to the lot. The remaining parcel still had access through Fitchburg and through Chalmers, through other rights of way that exist today. Because of the opinion that the lot did not meet the legal frontage, we decided to keep the original lot in its original configuration and then create a parcel A next to it, which would be a non-buildable lot, so that we could create it for tax purposes only. It would remain in the ownership of the plaza, and it would be tracked solely for tax purposes for Chick-fil-A. That's what they were looking for. The aspects of the site development plans remain the same. The plaza still has access through Fitchburg and through Chalmers and through the easements. They retain ownership of all the land, and it's really just a non-buildable lot for tax purposes.
Okay.
It's also noted as a non-building lot?
Correct, it's noted on the plan.
Okay. Yeah, that's non-buildable right there. Okay. Do we have any questions of the board?
Yeah.
Pretty straightforward.
Make a motion to endorse.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion?
Motion by Patrick, second by Paul.
That, make a motion to endorse. Have a second? Have a second? Okay, Paul. Roll call.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Tom Kergnen.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yes. Before we get started, folks, and I know there's a lot of people here, and sometimes history is required. And I'm going to try to give everybody for that area, part of the history and how we got here today, and I'm going to try to make it brief. Back in the '70s, I'm not exactly sure when, I'm going to say early '70s, late '60s, Digital Equipment Corporation was going to build a 400,000 square foot building on this site. I don't know what happened there. I do know that the City Council turned that down because that land, all of that land was all, which is now Orchard Hill, was Derby Farm, and that was designated as industrial land. Now, this is back in the '70s. Sometime in '80, and I think it was '85 or '86 timeframe, could have been a little bit, we had a Senator Songus on a low, and he had a group that did construction around the country, around the area. And they came into the planning board, and they had a plan for a business park that they wanted to do up on that hill. So we, they got an option from Derby Farm, and I was told, although it's for a fact, that they paid the farmer a million dollars for that option. In turn, they did a couple of year study where they did lot test borings and that type to determine what they could do with that property. They came back to the planning board, back to the planning department, and Mary Albertson was the director at that time, and I was on the board, and I think I was chairman. They came back and they said that the land was non-buildable, that there was no feasible way for them to build any kind of an industrial complex on that facility. So in essence, we had a piece of property in the city, it was approximately 100 acres, I think actual number was 105. It was worthless. No industrial, it was too steep for housing, a part of it, there was wetlands on it, and there are a number of issues. So economically, it could not be built. About that time, 2000, we said, let's come up with some creative ways, the possibility we could utilize this land for the city so that we'd have some income. Because right now, we had no future for it. So I was involved, Mary Albertson was involved, and the University of Massachusetts was involved. And we had a number of students come down, look at the property. We had a professor that was in charge of the planning department of UMass, name is Millie, I forget his name now. Okay? Mill, I think it was, came back, and he was the professor in charge, and he looked at it, and he says, yes. And we came up with an idea of a mixed use for that land. And what the mixed use was, is that if you could use the deep pockets of commercial to develop the land, then we could have land available for some industrial and some housing. So what we did was, we wrote an audit that said, if you came in and developed the whole 105 acres, you could then utilize one-third of it for commercial uses, one-third for industrial, and one-third for residential. We did not designate any of specific areas. I leave that up to a developer once he looks at the land. Sometime later, Orchard Hill Development came to us with a plan, and we said, okay. He had bought the land and proceeded to come up with a plan to build the commercial part of it. I'm told, just the site work was $12 million. So it was kind of, so that was the, what we now, what that meant is, they had to take the hill down about 35 feet and spread it out so that they had enough land to build up there on that property. So for the last 20 years, we've had Target, Kohl's, Bob's, and the restaurants, okay, that are all built up there on that land. Industrial has, still has not been built up there, and there's still So in essence, we had a piece of property in the city, it was approximately 100 acres. I think actual number is 105. It was worthless. No industrial. It was too steep for housing, a part of it. There was wetlands on it, and there were a number of issues. So economically, it could not be built. About that time, 2000, we said, let's come up with some creative ways, that possibility we could utilize this land for the city so that we'd have some income. Because right now, we had no future for it. So I was involved, Mary Albertson was involved, and the University of Massachusetts was involved. And we had a number of students come down, look at the property. We had a professor who was in charge of the planning department of UMass. Name is Millie, I forget his name now. Okay? Mill, I think it was, came back, and he was the professor in charge. And he looked at it, and he says, yes. And we came up with an idea of a mixed use for that land. And what the mixed use was, is that if you could use the deep pockets of commercial to develop the land, then we could have land available for some industrial and some housing. So what we did was, we wrote an audit that said, if you came in and developed the whole 105 acres, you could then utilize one-third of it for commercial uses, one-third for industrial, and one-third for residential. We did not designate any of specific areas. I'll leave that up to a developer once he looks at the land. Sometime later, Orchard Hill Development came to us with a plan. And we said, okay. He had bought the land and proceeded to come up with a plan to build the commercial part of it. I'm told, just the site work was $12 million. So it was kind of, so that was the, what we now, what that meant is, they had to take the hill down about 35 feet and spread it out, so that they had enough land to build up there on that property. So for the last 20 years, we've had Target, Kohl's, Bob's, and the restaurants, okay, that are all built up there on that land. Industrial has, still has not been built up there, and there's still land over on the other side that will be designated for industrial if it ever happens. But recently, we had this plan to come forward for the housing. Now, I want to step back a little bit, go back, is, we had a problem with this property. It had no sewerage. So the developer of Sky Lane came to us and said, maybe we could work together. So what happened is, through the planning board and the developers, they ran the pressure line through Sky Lane down to the new pump station that was placed over on Pioneer Drive. This also allowed to get sewerage now to the companies on Pioneer Drive. And so it took care of all of that, and this is the same line that was put in to take care of the problems that we had on Ridgewood, okay? Because there were a lot of homes up there at that time, that their septic systems had all failed. So the city's effort was to get the sewerage up to Ridgewood into White Street. From White Street up to the, White Street into Sky Lane and then to the pump station is all part of the project, which is, we talked to, is Orchard Hill today. So we're now here today with a development that's been around for 20-plus years, 25. It was planned maybe 25 years ago, okay? And this housing was part of that development. We recently had a consortium in the city where the number of city councilors were involved, some developers were involved, private citizens were involved, and they came up with, and as you know, the state has been pushing the city for more housing, and increased housing, and some of it's been the MBTA that we've heard about. So with those, with that information, the city and the city council created some new ordinances, and those new ordinances say that we can go to 2,000 square feet per unit. That basically is 22 units per acre. Okay? The MBTA is 14, and the only other structures that we have in the city that exceed that, that I know of, is over at the apartments over on Green Street. Those are 27 units per acre. And that was a rehab, an old building done back in the 60s. So I really don't know what happened there. So with that said, that's the history. So, you know, people have, you know, their own opinions, and they have ideas with that. But I want to let you know what the planning board is working with. We're working with the history, we're working with old drawings, we're working with the, what was developed and planned to help the city back 20 years ago, 25 years ago. So with that, I'll open up the public meeting for a site plan application for 86 Orchard Hill Park Drive, MAC 386, Block 4, Lot 1C, multi-family residential development. I will have question and answers at, we will have question and answers after they make their presentation.
Good evening. For the record, Matt Von Beatty with Fuller Engineering with a civil engineer for the project. I'm joined here by Jim Lambert, who's the applicant WPE's acquisitions.
Here you go. Try, you had it once here. Try it again. There you go.
Good evening. For the record, Matt Von Beatty with Fuller Engineering, the civil engineers, here for a site plan application by WPE's acquisitions LLC. I'm joined, my right, by Jim Lambert with the applicant, also Sean Kelly with Chapel Engineering, who's the traffic engineer on the project. Through the chair, would you mind if I swung around and just hit the power button on the TV? I think it might have turned off. It's right under this center of the thing.
Right here?
Just above that, kind of the little, yeah, right there.
Is there a doctor in the house?
Yes.
Okay. So we had it on earlier.
He's coming.
Correct.
I don't know.
Thank you.
There you go.
Got to agree to the terms.
Awesome. Just as a quick overview, I know we're back with the planning board back in May. The applicant filed the application on, for a site plan review on March 31st. I think we met with the board back on May 19th, and again, here tonight to follow up relative to some peer review on other processes we've been through. I'll just give a really, really brief overview of the project. This is our pressure from the last hearing. It's 17.95 acres on the west side of the existing Orchard Hill Park Retail Development. The project proposes 308 multifamily residential units within nine buildings. Project also proposes a clubhouse with amenities, pool area for the residents, eight six-car garages, which will be available to the residents, 472 parking spaces, meeting the city's parking requirements under zoning. Two access points are proposed, one to Harvard Street and one to the Orchard Hill Park Drive Extension. Per initial discussions with police department, the request is made to have Harvard Street as a left-out only, so that's reflected on the plans. Additional amenities include some tree plantings, fully shielded lighting that are dark sky compliant, and trash enclosures and other amenities for the residents. The site is located in the multi-use two, MU2 zoning district. The use is permitted by right with site plan review. The development meets all standards of the underlying zoning district, including unit density setbacks along those lines. There is, as you noted, Chair, a wetland along the very perimeter of the site, most prominently along the east side. The project proposes just two small areas of wetland disturbance to gain access to the site, one approximately to Harvard Street, and one between the two halves of development where an intermittent stream comes through. The wetland areas were permitted through a, it's a process called an abbreviated notice of resource area delineation, which confirms the wetland line with the conservation commission and DEP prior to development planning. The project is planning a forthcoming application with the conservation commission relative to wetland permitting. Since our hearing back on the 19th, there's been some plan updates relative to both the planning board itself, their comments. We received a bunch of department head comments relative to our initial review. Also, the city had requested two third-party peer reviews, one for stormwater, one for traffic, so we've received those letters as well. Again, just as a quick reminder, the three-unit, three-story residential buildings that are proposed, just a general rendering of it.
So these were all going to be three-story, or was...
Yes, so they're all three or four stories, depending on the side of the buildings. A lot of topography through the sites, there'll be three stories on one and four stories on the backside.
So on the backside, where it starts sloping off, that's where you're going to go to four-story?
Yep, for each building.
And that's on the industrial side, correct? Am I right on that?
Um...
Or on the backside?
Yeah, so. Let him make his presentation.
Can somebody point to what is on that map and explain it to the people here, please?
Okay.
Instead of just saying, this is this and that's that? We want identification, please.
We're going to have a Q and A at the end.
A lot of it.
Thank you.
Welcome. We want to come up and use a microphone and then use one of these microphones and then run it out?
Are you going to change the computer?
Yeah, no, I don't mind.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Somebody else run your...
No, I can point to it. Here's one. I'm going to switch to a match, let me know. So I know, I know folks are aware, this is Target.
You taking it? That ain't going to work. It's not made for, I guess that's it.
I'll project. So this is the existing Target, Orchard Hill Retail Plaza. This is the wooded area just to the east of it, down Harvard Street here. Sky Lane, the cul-de-sac, comes right along the taco plant down here. Each of these kind of yellow and orange and brown buildings here are one of nine residential buildings. Here, off Parish Street, you have the clubhouse, pool, mailroom. This is Orchard Hill Park Drive Extension, the recent cul-de-sac that was constructed intersection of Orchard Hill Park Drive, Pioneer Drive down here.
Okay. Which buildings are three-story, which ones are yellow?
Sure. So on the high side, there'll be three, on the backside, there'll be four. So for these buildings here, the left side will be three, the right side will be four. For all these ones here, the west side is side facing the residential, will be three, the backside, four, same, three, four. Three stories on the right side of this building, four on the left side, and same here, three on the right side, four on the backside.
Okay. What else you want to add to this?
These small rectangles are the proposed carports or car garages. They'll be one-story high. Obviously, the parking and drive aisles.
Okay. Your wetlands have been a gateway.
Yeah, sure. There's a wetland ditch that runs along here, along this property line, it ends right around, I get my finger here. Comes down this way, the D and M is a stream that comes off near Scott Lane, to the center of the site, comes down here under Orchard Hill Park Drive.
And what are the delineations?
This is three. Make it, we'll have questions after. Okay. Okay. Go on with your presentation.
So as noted, we did receive a stormwater review through the city's third-party peer review engineer. They had a... Again. So we did receive a stormwater peer review through the city's third-party engineer. We see those comments in general, obviously, all good comments. We did disagree with many, many or all of them. Most of them were relative to the water shake calculations and the hydrologic calculations, which makes it sound simple, but a lot of comments relative to how the existing and the proposed stormwater is modeled. And they asked us to perform soil test pits for, at the stormwater basins, to evaluate the soils, which we did and submitted. They did ask for some additional information relative to different stormwater treatments that were proposed, some additional technical documentation, and some additional detail on stormwater details, for instance, construction of the infiltration basin, they suggested an underdrain, which we agreed to, and some other comments along those lines. We did submit and receive a response back. I think the majority of the comments were received, and the ones that were, I guess, they asked for a little additional clarity, I think we agree with in general and happy to accommodate them.
Could you go over the peer review that we had, and some of the questions that... We actually had a peer review on the... Could you go over that?
Yeah, sure. So as part of our...
Just one second, just to let you know, the planning board, we actually, with the strong, these were given to us, we're not experts, we're local folk, and some of us are engineers, some of us worked in business. But what we do is, we actually contracted professionals for the peer review for the wetlands and for traffic. So there's two separate studies that were done outside of this board.
Chair, we do have representatives from those two parties.
And we will have representatives. Go ahead.
Would you like me to run through the drainage view?
Yes.
Yep, yeah, sure. So as part of our initial submission, we submitted a drainage report, which runs through the existing and proposed hydrology of the site. We have the mass DEP stormwater regulations, plus any applicable city regulations that we have, we have to meet as part of our design. We provided those calculations, provided a stormwater system, which included, I believe, over 110,000 cubic feet of storage to mitigate runoff from the site, different hydrodynamics, separator treatment units, fire retention areas, and infiltration basins. Those calculations were reviewed by the city's third-party, per the recommendation of both the board and city engineering. They had a list of comments and questions that they had for us. A lot of it has to do with how we're remodeling the basins and the existing proposed conditions. We updated our calcs, our plans with those recommendations, resubmitted and received a response back, which I think just a few last suggestions or recommendations.
Okay. Do you have anything else you want? You said we, Elizabeth, we have the other...
We have representatives from Vanessen Associates, and also from Postononya in the audience.
Okay. Can we have a traffic?
Vanessen Associates.
And through the chair, we can run through the comments received for traffic as well.
Okay. Go ahead. Oh, you got Vina. Yeah, you can speak on that, right there.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Jeffrey Durk with Vanessen Associates, and as the chair had mentioned, we're the transportation peer review consultants for the city. Just by way of kind of an overview of our role, Mr. Chairman, I think you explained it very well. Our job really is, we're not conducting an independent traffic study for the project, but what we are doing is reviewing the materials that the applicant has submitted. My role as the transportation consultant, I'm looking at the traffic study that the applicant had submitted, and I presume had presented to you at the last hearing, looking at the methodology that they used to undertake that analysis, make sure it was conducted in accordance with industry practices. In this case, it's the Massachusetts Department of Transportation standards. We also review the site plan, and our role in looking at the site plan, that you had a stormwater peer review, what we look at is access and circulation within the site for motor vehicles, pedestrians, and bicycles. In particular, what we're also looking for is circulation for the fire truck, to make sure that a fire truck can access the property, circulate within the development, as well as for moving vans in the case of a project such as this. So we want to make sure that as the site plan is designed, that all of those vehicles necessary to service this property can work within the confines of the site plan as presented to you. So what I thought I would start with is the site plan, because you just heard a presentation about the site plan. So our comments, as they relate to the site plan, our first level of comments, the applicant has since submitted a response to those comments, really dealt with fire truck turning maneuvers, entering the property from both of the access points. And when you heard the applicant, or you heard Elizabeth mention at the beginning, was that one of the comments of the police department was to have the access to Harvard Street restricted to basically a right-in and a left-out. As we look at the design of that entrance, as that being one of the primary responses for emergency vehicles and the fire trucks getting in there, we need to make sure that the fire truck can make the turns. And as we look at the public way, the fire code requires the fire truck can't cross the center line. So if you're on Harvard Street and that fire truck is turning in, it can't swing into the wrong direction of travel to make the turn into the site. So we look at the driveway to make sure that it has sufficient width, and I think importantly, the corner radii are designed so the truck can make that turn without having to swing wide. So we asked the applicant to provide to us a vehicle turning analysis for the fire truck entering the site, circulating within the development, and then exiting, both from the access point out to Orchard Hill Park Drive Extension, as well as on Harvard Street. So they did provide that analysis as a part of our subsequent review. What we've indicated is, although residents of this project will not be allowed to turn left, I'm sorry, turn right going out or left coming in, the fire truck still needs to be able to make those maneuvers. What they've shown to us in the analysis is a left turn coming in and a left turn going out. And when you look at the design of the driveway, that's actually the easiest maneuver for a fire truck. And when you look at the design of the driveway, that's actually the easiest maneuver for a fire truck to make. The difficult maneuver is a right turn coming in and a right turn going out. So we've asked them to show us that analysis, because that may require some modifications to the design of that driveway. Now, as we proceed into the site, one of the things that we look at with the fire truck is, of course, as you mentioned, the aerial portion of the fire truck. So the fire truck has a ladder, that portion of the ladder hangs over the front of the cab. So even though we can see that the wheel path stays within the traveled way, that basket or the ladder portion is going to swing outside of the traveled way as we look at the analysis. There were a couple areas in the site, and as you look at the eastern portion of the site where they have those exterior garages, as we look at the swept path of that fire truck, we want to verify that the ladder portion does not swing into the area where those garages are located. So we've asked them to look at that, to see if any modifications need to be made within the site. And the same thing as they're traveling between the buildings that you see, there's a set of four buildings. As the truck turns and maneuvers between those four buildings, looking at some of the corner radii in there, that area as well, to make sure the truck can make the maneuvering. So there's some areas within the site that we've asked the applicant to reevaluate as they relate to fire truck maneuvers, entering from Harvard Street, then circulating within the site to prove out that the site plan can function as well. The same thing in looking at those vehicles, as we look at a trash truck or a moving van, that vehicle is able, it's smaller, it can get into the site. But as you look at the portion of the property where it turns into like the triangular piece that's parallel to Orchard Drive Park Extension there, you can see there's two buildings there, and it turns into a little triangle area. The parking area pinches down there, and there's a dumpster located in that area. Exactly, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you look at a vehicle trying to maneuver around there, it becomes very tight and confined. And so there's some modifications that may need to be made in that area there to have a moving van circulate, but also to make sure that a trash truck can maneuver and get into the dumpster area there. So those are some refinements within the site plan itself. The other comments on the site plan is the chair had a very good description as he was describing the level of effort that had to be undertaken to level the hill so that the development could take place. So as you proceed in the site from north to south within the development itself, going by where the clubhouse area is there, that's where you have the transition from the level area essentially down to the grade of Harvard Street. So as the driveway is getting developed, there's a series of curves that have to be created. So basically a hill, and you need to transition from the top of that hill down to meet the grade of Harvard Street. And so one of the plan sets that the applicant prepared in response to our comments was actually a profile of that roadway. So as you look at the roadway profile from the clubhouse heading towards Harvard Street, it slopes down into eight percent grade, okay, which is basically about the limit that you want to have for fire truck circulation. Then it transitions to four percent, and then it meets Harvard Street. Ideally, what we'd like to have is a leveling area, so as you're coming down the hill, especially when you have inclement weather, the road is wet or has snow on it, you want to have a leveling area so a vehicle, if it's coming down the hill, can slow down and stop at the stop line before it gets to Harvard Street. So ideally, that leveling area we'd like to have is two percent. I think the city allows for a little steeper grade. But what we've asked the applicant to look at is that transition, eight percent to four percent, and then right into Harvard Street. Some refinements should be made to that curve, so it gently transitions, so that when we get to Harvard Street, we're at somewhere closer to a three percent grade, within about 50 feet of the intersection. That just gives a vehicle, as it's coming down the hill, the ability to be able to stop and come to a level surface roughly before they get to Harvard Street to make their turns. So there's, there's some refinements as it relates to the site plan, that we've asked them to go and look at each of those elements. They will affect or could affect parking layout and some other things within the development itself. So again, just some homework that the applicant is going to look at as it relates to the site plan. So that's something that's outstanding that we're waiting for a response on. So our primary focus was looking at the transportation impact assessment that the applicant has prepared. We did confirm that this study was prepared in accordance with standard practices. So we look at the methodology that was used for collecting the data that is used as a part of the assessment. The study area that they looked at to make sure that they've included all of the intersections where the project would have an impact on traffic operations. As the applicant has probably presented to you with those turn restrictions, so if you're coming out of Harvard Street, you can't turn right and you can't turn left going in, so that forces the traffic basically toward Route Two. So about 70% of the trips are expected to be oriented on Route Two. Most of that traffic is heading toward downtown Leominster, so it's heading in a westerly direction or continuing along Route Two. So that's the focus of the majority of the traffic. The amount of trips that they're expecting the project's going to produce is somewhere between 120 and 125 peak hour trips. So that's the amount of traffic produced over a one-hour period in the morning when traffic volumes are the heaviest, so somewhere between seven and nine in the morning. And in the evening, somewhere between four and six in the evening. So that's the amount of new traffic that they're adding on to the roadway network. As they've undertaken their analysis, what they've shown as a result of looking at motorist delays and vehicle queuing at the intersections, is they've shown that there is sufficient capacity on the roadway network to accommodate the additional traffic from the project. So as we're looking at kind of that conclusionary statement, what we're looking at is how does the project impact motorist delays and vehicle queuing at any of the intersections where the project is expected to add traffic? And what they've shown in terms of net impact was delays didn't go up by any more than 20 seconds in any particular intersection. And that, and that-
Now, this is on detail, it's done scientifically.
So if I, if I could start again, the impact of the project over existing conditions, and I think just to, you know, kind of put it in context with respect to the comments that we're hearing, it doesn't mean that it's free-flowing conditions out there. The applicant has identified that there are movements that are operating over capacity, okay? And that there's long queues, left turns from Mechanic Street, Harvard Street, or coming down Harvard Street, turning on Mechanic Street. Level of service of F with queuing that takes place. The same thing if you're getting off of Route Two when you're heading on to, heading toward, back towards the project site. You're getting off on the Eastbound ramps, on the Old Union Turnpike, and you're trying to make a left-hand turn. Very difficult, it backs up on the highway. What we're talking about as it relates to the impact is they're measuring the net impact or increase in delays over existing conditions. It doesn't mean it's free-flowing conditions, and we all know that's not the case. But what we're looking at is how does the project impact those conditions? So if you're waiting in a miserable long queue trying to get off of Route Two before the project is in place versus after the project's in place, what they're saying is, your wait in that queue will be no more than an additional 20 seconds in that queue, okay? It doesn't mean you're going to get right off the highway without having to stop. It doesn't mean there's not going to be a queue there. But what it means is the relative increase in, in delay is about 20 seconds. If there's 15 vehicles waiting to get off that, off of Route Two onto the roadway before and after the project, what they're saying in their analysis is there'll be 16 vehicles instead of 15 vehicles. That's the measured impact of the project. So it's not saying it's free-flowing conditions, but what we're looking at is what is the net impact of the project? As a result of those defined impacts, the applicant has proposed mitigation that goes along with the impacts that are described. So there's a series of sign and pavement marking improvements, safety enhancements, and traffic signal retiming that the applicant is going to undertake, that will create additional capacity, that will offset those impacts that we're talking about. So we're enhancing safety, we're adding capacity through some retiming of the traffic signals. So those are the elements of the transportation assessment that we've evaluated. We've agreed with the applicant's analysis, we've agreed with those impacts that I've stated as they relate to the net impact and increase in delays in queuing from the project. The applicant has mitigation measures, we provided some additional ideas for them to implement. The applicant has agreed to undertake those measures. As it relates to their transportation analysis and our review of their traffic study, there are no outstanding items. The applicant has addressed those items, they've identified mitigation, we've reviewed the mitigation, and we agree that those measures are appropriate for the impact of this project. So our outstanding comments deal with the site plan and proving out that safe and efficient access can be provided, that circulation within the project site works, and that there's sufficient parking with consideration of the modifications the applicant has proposed. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have now or later on this evening.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that. I would like to, as it develops, give us some idea of some of the mitigation that has been taken, is going forward on traffic.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Again, Sean Kelly with Chapel Engineering. So I think Jeff published a better job than I could have to walk through the peer review, but we can talk about the mitigation. Matt, can you jump a few slides ahead? The one location that, and just to, just to reiterate for those that weren't at the last hearing, you know, we, we have done a comprehensive study where we've looked at the seven locations that we expect, you know, will accommodate the majority of traffic or at least are, are close to the project site. And they're shown in this image here, and those locations, just to walk you through it. It's Harvard Street at White Street, Harvard Street at the Orchard Hill Park Drive, the signalized intersection, Harvard Street at the on-ramp to Route Two westbound, which also gets you to I-190, Harvard Street at the Route Two westbound off-ramp, Harvard Street at Mechanic Street in Old Union Turnpike, and then Harvard Street at the Route Two eastbound on and off ramp, which is the, the ramp just past D'Ambrocio Eye Care. We looked at the morning and evening analysis as part of our initial work. As your consultant recommended, we also expanded that to look at the Saturday midday. Typically for residential, you look at the commuter peaks, but given the proximity to the commercial space next door, it was prudent to look at the, the Saturday midday as well. Jump ahead, Matt. Keep going. And ultimately, the real focus was the, the one location that had a crash rate that was, you know, higher than the state average. The state has already designated this as a, as a safety improvement program location, which means it has a, a high frequency both in terms of collisions and also severity, was that Old Union Turnpike intersection with the Route Two eastbound on and off ramps. And this is one of the work products we asked to put together was a collision diagram to get a better understanding as to what types of crashes are occurring there. And as you can see, the, the bulk of them, eight out of 14, almost 60% of them involved crashes with vehicles coming off Route Two eastbound onto the ramp and making that right-hand turn towards Mechanic Street, heading back towards Leominster. There were also some collisions in the left-turn lane to get onto the highway. There were some angle collisions involving vehicles getting off Route Two, turning left, and through traffic on Old Union Turnpike. We went out and did a field inspection to take a look at existing conditions. We also reviewed a road safety audit that was done for this location to look at some of the concerns that were raised in the past. And based on that, we've come up with a conceptual improvement plan that we're committed to advancing to improve safety. Probably a little hard to see here, but, but essentially, I'll, I'll walk through all the elements. The first thing is all the pavement markings within this intersection are pretty faded. In many instances, they're non-existent. So the first thing we've agreed to is to put down all new pavement markings within the limits of work, bring them all up to compliance standards, make it all visible. That includes the edge lines, the center lines, that the pavement, the markings around the islands, et cetera. We've agreed to replace a number of, of signs that are either faded or have been knocked over or should be there that aren't today, both on the ramp itself, as well as on Old Union Turnpike approaching the intersection. One of the things that was brought up in the road safety audit that was done is that some of the signage that's located on that island to your left as you get off of the off-ramp, looking to turn right, actually blocks your view of traffic coming from Old Union Turnpike. So you're trying to look through the signs to see approaching traffic would contribute to those angle collisions. So we've agreed to take the existing signage or, if it need be, replace it and get that signage out of the site triangles, that the sightlines are improved in both directions. There's vegetation out there that, that impairs some sightlines, both adjacent to the ramp and also further east. We've agreed to, to advance getting that trimmed up to improve the sightlines that are out there. The pavement markings on Old Union Turnpike today could use some enhancements. The left-turn lane really isn't well-defined, it doesn't have the dotted line that lets you know when you're entering the lane. We've, we've recommended improving that, adding new left-turn arrow-only markings. The island opposite that lane today is, is basically just two paint lines. If you're not familiar with the area, that can be a little confusing. We've recommended that that gets crosshatched, that you typically see on a painted island, so it stands out. And then again, some, some additional advanced signage on Old Union Turnpike. And again, many of these recommendations were outlined in prior studies conducted for Mass DOT for this location. And that's, that's really our, our focus is, is this location, out of, out of all the ones that we studied, was the one intersection that had a crash rate that was above that, that state average. And we're confident these measures here, which again, will work with the town of Lancaster and DOT as it is over the town line, to get these implemented to improve the safety at this intersection. I think that's, that's all I have in terms of the offsite. There were, I will say, there were a couple other recommendations, repainting some stop lines, adding some yield line pavement markings at the signal, and then some tweaks to the signal itself. And certainly, we're, we're also agreeable to doing that as well.
One question, you've mentioned it several times, is Saturday counts? And how does that, or why is that used? And how does that compare different to your regular counts?
Sure, Matt, can we go back a couple slides? Right there. Yeah, so, so typically, when you do a study for a residential development, you're focused primarily, what you're drilling down on is the weekday morning and the weekday evening peak hours. And the, the reason we focus on these time periods is typically that's when commuter traffic is heaviest, and that's when the traffic associated with your project will also be heavier, so it creates kind of a, a worst-case condition. This is kind of a unique site where we have, you know, hundreds of thousands of square feet of commercial space, you know, immediately to the east of us, including, you know, the Target, the Dicks, the Coles. And because of that, you know, we, there was concern raised by your consultant that, you know, the Saturday midday might actually be the more critical time period, particularly given the fact that, that the trip generation for the project, whether it's during the morning, during the evening, or the Saturday midday, is, is fairly consistent. So we went out, we did counts on a Saturday, we counted all of those locations, and I, I put the Harvard Street at Orchard Hill Park Drive volumes. These are the total hourly volumes that enter that intersection, just to provide a comparison. And as you can see, you know, in the morning, you'd have about 600 cars go through that intersection per hour. In the evening peak hour, when people are coming home from work, and you have commercial traffic that's active, that number more than doubles to about almost 1,300 vehicles per hour. And then what we found was that during the Saturday midday, it was a little bit lower, it was close to 1,200 per hour. So, so the weekday evening still was the critical time period. But it also was important to look at it on a Saturday, because the, the traffic patterns are different. They're not commuter patterns, in many instances, they're, it's really shopping patterns, if you will. But in terms of the relative impact, whether it's the morning, the evening, or the Saturday midday, we're putting about 100 cars an hour, or about, you know, two cars a minute ballpark through that location and less as you, as you move further away. The impacts on Saturday were consistent with what we saw in the morning and evening, that there was, you know, some, some moderate increases in delay, but relative to, to how the intersections operate today, it wasn't a significant impact. But we did, again, we, we looked at all the locations for Saturday, including that, that, that shopping period.
Did you, look, you had some numbers, differentiation between Harvard Street and the east of the entrance over on the Orchard Hill Extension, or the?
In terms of how much traffic goes in and out of those locations?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's ballpark, it's about 50/50. I mean, if you're heading out, if you're going to go pioneer and take it out, if you're heading out, say you're going towards like Lunenburg Skyview, some of that traffic, we, we expect would just come out onto Orchard Hill Park Drive. It wouldn't make sense to drive all the way down to Harvard just to loop back into the signal. So there is some that will go out, we'll call it the back door, if you will. The rest of it, in terms of, that heads to Harvard Street towards Route Two, which is really the bulk of the traffic, it's a, it's about a 50/50 split in terms of whether they're coming out the Harvard Street side or coming out on Orchard Hill Park Drive and coming down to the signal. It's really going to depend on where, what building you live in and which, which driveway is more proximate to your, to your home.
So does that split the 100, roughly 100 cars between the two, or is that 100 cars on Harvard Street?
Uh, that would split it, correct. When you get to the signal, there would be 106, 102, 93.
At the signal.
And about half will come down the hill from the plaza, and about half would come down Harvard Street from the exit drive.
So I'm trying to get, you know, people to understand where that, where that traffic is. So it does come from the two?
Correct.
Okay. I think that covers traffic. Okay. We'll get into the wetland, have we done the?
Stormwater?
Peer review? What's that?
Stormwater.
Your stormwater, yeah.
We have Fussin O'Neil here for, for stormwater.
Good evening. My name's Scott Turner, I'm with Fussin O'Neil. I'm a registered professional engineer and a certified planner, and I did the, the peer review for the, the stormwater design for the project. We submitted our initial letter roughly three weeks ago, we received responses last week. Our initial review had roughly 39, well, had 39 comments. That's a little bit of a mis, misrepresentation, because some of the comments were the same about different facilities throughout the, the design. They addressed, they submitted, they resubmitted last week. We- We turned the letter around last week. Of the 39 comments, 27 of them, we consider to be closed, which means we have 12 remaining. Some of them are simply modeling issues or modeling items that we need more information on. When they resubmitted, they actually forgot a piece of the, or forgot a piece of the design, which they have resubmitted. We just got it so late, we weren't able to turn that around prior to this meeting. In my opinion, I don't think I need to go through all of these comments unless you want me to, but in the interest of...
Let's put it this way. Can you give a, I don't wanna say thumbnail, but a sort of a sketch of what you found for wetlands, what the impact were, and some of the problems that we found that were, if they were corrected?
Okay. So, we didn't, we weren't, we're not a wetlands consultant. We didn't flag the wetlands. We simply analyze the stormwater, and the stormwater on the site flows towards the wetlands. So, you know, the site has, I believe it's one infiltration basin, two bio-retention basins, and a number of large, I think it's probably six or seven stormwater tanks that sit below the surface. Those are standard. Those are things that I design all the time. We had some questions about how they modeled those subsurface chambers, which they have corrected. As was stated before, we asked for additional test holes in the areas where the stormwater facilities are proposed, consistent with Mass DEP stormwater standards. They did the holes. The holes, the results of the test holes show that decided appropriately and designed appropriately with regards to soil conditions and with, relative to groundwater. We had some questions about different factors that go into the modeling, like how they model the hydrology. Again, we received some supplemental information late last week that I haven't seen. I need to look at that again to see if, you know, what I think of their changes there. The one question that I do have, and I know that they went before Conservation Commission to get a, an order of resource area delineation, an order of resource area determination.
Order of determination.
Yeah, one thing I did see, and I don't know if this was discussed at all with Conservation, is that there are two potential vernal pools between the development and the shopping mall to the east. Now, the potential vernal pools, that doesn't mean there are vernal pools there, it just means that they're potential. And honestly, anybody can file paperwork to have it designated as a potential vernal pool. The reason that's important is because if those are vernal pools, they need to be protected. It could change the stormwater design. So, in my opinion, what I recommend is that the board coordinate with the Conservation Commission to see if that was explored, if the determination on the vernal pools was made. If they're not, then I don't have an issue with the design. If they are, then I would expect that there would be some changes to the design to protect those vernal pools.
Yeah, the Conservation will be taking a look at this.
Exactly, exactly.
So, they will have final say on that.
You know, most of the, most of the comments are fairly straightforward. Like I said, we just received some additional information that needs to be looked at, but everything that they've done is generally consistent with projects I design and projects that I see all the time.
So, you see any impact on additional runoff or any?
So, they've collected stormwater, they treat it, they have, you know, either through the bio-retention basins, the infiltration basin, or these large chambers that go in the ground.
Right.
They have water quality units that treat the water before it gets to the underground chambers, the bio-retention basins, or the infiltration basins. That's standard. They meet the standard for water quality per Mass DEP. They meet the standards for infiltration from Mass DEP. They have, the question about peak flows, standard two. That's one of the items that we have supplemental information to look at. That's really it.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Is there anything more that you wish to add to your presentation? Any questions or anything you might wanna, before I open up to the audience?
No, the only thing I'll highlight is some department comment and some board comments we received at the last hearing. I know there was a question about snow storage, I think it was also when the...
Okay, why don't you go through the department comments?
Yep. Yes, I'll just, some key highlights. So, I know snow storage came up with the board. We did provide an exhibit showing that it meets the zoning requirement of 5% of the parking and driveway area. I know the applicants reviewed it too, they're comfortable, their operations teams can handle it and committed to that. We did receive comments from Fire. I know, we're happy to run through Jeff's circulation comments at all, but I know they're comfortable with it, and there's some bidirectional amplifier communication things they asked us to look at as this thing gets into construction, if and when, which I know the applicant's happy to work with, the Fire Department, to meet their needs there. And we also did hear from police, I believe. They had obviously a large say in ordering the third-party peer review for traffic. It was one of the things they wanted to review, and I believe they're comfortable with Sean and Jeff's findings for traffic.
Okay. Okay. You still gotta go to Conservation and the rest of the Board of Health and comment. There weren't, well, no comments yet.
Well, the DPW comments were addressed?
Yep, yeah, correct. I don't think we got a formal response from DPW, but their comments were largely the third-party review for traffic and stormwater. It was a little bit big of a project for them to want to take in and review. I know they do review some projects for the city.
Can I follow up on the snow storage?
Yeah, go ahead.
When we talked about snow storage last time, it was in the context of the parking, where you only had three spots, and the snow storage is gonna eat into that parking. And as a practical matter, for plows to be able to come and plow the spots, cars have to be able to go somewhere. And I still don't see how it's viable, what you put together for the residency.
Yeah, yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna speak for the applicant. I know they reviewed with their operations team, depending on the development and how things are being operated on the site, they bring different equipment in to move snow, so it's not necessarily...
The cars have to have somewhere to go for them to be able to get the equipment and to move snow, and your plan doesn't allow for that because they're gonna take those spots away for snow storage, unless something has changed.
The snow would be stored outside of the parking spaces. I might be misunderstanding.
But as a practical matter, it's going to encroach on parking spots, and you only have three extra. I mean, it's just impossible, if you're piling snow up, that it's not going to, it's not going to seep over. And again, as a practical matter, if you have hundreds of people who live in a complex, when you bring in that equipment, they have to move their cars somewhere for them to clear those spots. And if there are no extra spots, and snow is taking up others, unless you expect all of the residents to leave the property altogether and then come back at a coordinated time, which is not going to happen, again, I think you've created a situation that's gonna be a nightmare for residents there, and I really have a hard time with that.
If I may. So, all good points. I think, a couple of things to think of. One, we're almost never at full capacity on occupancy, and therefore, we're not at full capacity on parking, okay? We also feel...
That's an assumption.
We also know that the parking ratio here is, compared to what we build throughout the state over the last 10 years, is more than sufficient for what the project will have. Thirdly, if there is an abundance of snow in a particular storm where we have nowhere to put it, we can take it off-site.
Do you have a maintenance plan for that?
Yeah, again, I just, you're, we talked about it last time, and you're still not addressing the main point. Cars, cars have to have somewhere to go while you clear snow. And there simply isn't an opportunity here unless you expect residents en masse. At the same time as the plows arrive to leave the property, there has to be space for them to go to, and there just isn't in this regard. I live in a place like this, I deal with it all the time. So, I respect your calculations, but in real life, it doesn't work that way. The other thing we talked about last time, while I am, Mike, was that the dumpsters, there were only two dumpsters for 300 units. Is that something that you were going to? We talked about it last time, you're gonna rethink that, but I haven't seen any change. Are you sticking with that?
It didn't change.
And you still feel that's sufficient?
Yeah, but to clarify, they're not just two dumpsters, there's a trash compactor.
But two locations.
Two locations, correct.
For the entire...
That's correct.
Now, you have, in the individual apartments, the buildings, do you have locations for trash there?
The individual buildings do not.
So, you're trying to tell me that these nine buildings, these people are gonna carry their trash to the two extremes of this park? And the other two extremes?
Yep.
They carry their trash to their dumpsters? Ain't gonna happen.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may, so, yes, so, all the properties that we operate throughout the state and the country, as well as in the industry, that is the norm, and it operates like this every day, and it's not an issue.
That's not one that I accept. Okay, we had asked for another location for a dump station, at least one more. And, yeah, that was discussed. And I don't see it, okay? And I just can't see with this kind of population, especially in the winter. If you got places down south in North Carolina, that's fine, but up here in the winter, it gets pretty rough to walk a distance. And in some cases here, you have quite a distance between dumpsters. So, it's a small thing, but it's something that we have to, we have to deal with, that we have to live with forward. Okay? Carol, do you have a question?
Well, I just thought we'd, in every other...
Yeah.
We obviously don't have...
Yeah.
Do you mind if I?
No, I'd love to have you do it. You're a better reader than I am.
I'm a better reader. So, we usually read the department head comments in every application, particularly for site plans, so I'll do that. Fire was an email from the deputy chief after reviewing all site plans and revised documents. The Fire Department is satisfied with the responses to the fire truck turning analysis and testing comments. We spoke with the Water Department to go over the water supply, and it appears to be sufficient and in compliance with the Code of Mass regulations. We would advise and ask that all fire hydrants on-site be or within 500 feet of another The police comments, again, these are based upon the, our peer, from the peer review from Van Ness. Overall, and this is from Sergeant Robichaud of the Leominster Police Department. Overall, I agree with the peer review report. I've included my comments below, reference to the comments in the report. This email also addresses the traffic concerns. There are other issues regarding the public safety, radio, security, and quality of light problems that we are concerned with as well. If you have any questions, please let me know. Comment one, referring to the first comment from Van Ness, I agree with using Saturday traffic to better assess traffic volume in the area, since it is primarily a retail area, and that's when traffic is most consistent. I noted they used data collected in February. The peer review stated this was acceptable, but I feel it may be low compared to average traffic during the rest of the year. Comments three and four from Van Ness, the Police Department responds, we can provide crash data for most of the involved intersections, but Old Union Turnpike and parts of Harvard Street, including Route 2 off-ramps, are in Lancaster. They would have to obtain that information from Lancaster PD. Comment eight from Van Ness, the Police Department responds, I agree and would suggest, A, looking into adding a stop sign on Pioneer Drive at the Orchard Hill Park extension in addition to the one they suggest on Orchard Hill Park extension. B, consider adding a left turn-only lane to Harvard Street westbound at the Route 2 westbound on-ramp. This would help limit traffic backing up behind vehicles waiting to turn left onto Route 2 west. It's rare, but occasionally, traffic backs up to the Route 2 westbound off-ramp on the Lancaster side of Harvard Street. I also agree with the remaining comments of Van Ness, with no additional comment from me. Building approves. And when I said, that's, there's no additional comment. Building inspector approves. Board of Health, comments, pool will be required to be inspected, permitted yearly with the Board of Health. Adequate dumpsters must be on concrete pad and fenced in, should have planned for bulky item disposal. Thank you. All buildings shall have secure buzzer system for entry. That's the Board of Health. The assessor's office approves, based on the need for housing, the location and the amenities nearby, the project would benefit Leominster. New growth would be significant. The retail market would also benefit from the project. That's the assessor's. Conservation, to get approval without appearing before Leominster Conservation Commission, the plan would need to clearly show that the limits of work are outside of any jurisdictional resource under the Wetlands Protection Act and the buffer zones that they carry. This includes the stream north of the property as well as the wetlands surrounding it. I understand that the applicant will be going before the Conservation Commission. DPW, the Department of Public Works recommends the planning board hire an independent engineer firm to review the site plans and drainage report. We have done that. The driveway access from Harvard Street will require a culvert design. There is an outlet proposed from bio-retention area 1.1 and bio-retention area 3.1 that will flow into the bordered, bordering vegetated wetlands to the west of the driveway entrance from Harvard Street. This bordered, bordering vegetated wetland naturally drains from the west to east across the property. Therefore, a culvert will need to be designed at this proposed entrance to carry the flow from west to east, which eventually comes to a storm drain culvert underneath Harvard Street. I am assuming the Conservation Commission will address that. What is the plan for the Augustus Gates marker that will be removed? It appears there is a monument sign footing proposed, but I do not see the location of the reset marker on the site plan. I don't know what that is.
Well, let me, okay, let me explain that one.
All right. I don't, I didn't ask what it was, I'm just saying I don't know what it is.
Well, what it was, was there was a gentleman that died on that property, and somebody put a mark, I guess he owned the property one time, back in the 1800s, and somebody put a marker up there, so denoting where he had died.
Was he buried there? Is he buried there?
He's not buried there, but just a marker, that's where he died. But he's just, that's all it is, was a marker.
Why is the, so, I don't know why the DPW's asking for this stuff, but why, he's assuming it's going to be removed? I haven't heard anything about it being removed.
Yeah, it's gotta be relocated to put in the, some of the road, so it's gonna be, it's, I guess there've been different ideas, maybe we give it to the Historical Commission or, I don't know.
All right.
We found the marker, that's all we know.
There are two, the DPW, again, there are two trash enclosures proposed. Is this enough for 308 residential units? This is the, at least the third time I'm hearing this tonight. There appears to be a conflict between a sanitary sewer manhole and the sewer, and the storm drain line between Buildings H and I. The bio-retention area 3.1 has an outlet pipe that directs the flow toward the proposed clubhouse. The applicant may want to review this layout. A deep hole soil test is required at each basin and underground storage area prior to construction. Please coordinate with DPW to schedule the deep hole tests. This project is subject to a four-to-one, one-in-one I and I removal of the sewer system. Please coordinate with the DPW as to the infiltration and inflow, that's the I and I remediation that will be needed to meet this requirement. The DPW recommends the planning board hire a traffic consultant, we've done that. Water and sewer clearance plans will be required as part of the building permit. Domestic fire, domestic and fire services to be separate services for each building. The sewer main between Buildings D and F should tie into a sewer manhole. Has the applicant secured the right of access to, to access the utilities located on lands now are formerly owned by Pioneer Park LLC, and to pass and repass over the same for connection of the driveway to Orchard Hill Park Drive? So, I, let me just finish all the comments, but I would like, I think the board would like to hear responses on DPW, whether they're with, whether it's within their jurisdiction or not, but Police Department, I've already read those.
Did you get the one from Wire? It was a separate one in front of you. It's dated July 17th.
I did.
Wire.
Fire, okay.
Wire.
Wire.
I know, I heard her. I know, I heard her. I don't have it. Oh, Wire, Joe Forrier.
Joe Forrier.
He wants to make sure we get the upgrades to the traffic light and a 360 camera in the new fire GPS preemption equipment. And those are all the comments, but I'm curious about the DPW comments.
Could you speak to the DPW comment?
Yeah, if you want, I think I wrote them all down. I have them here, I'll run through them real quick. Obviously, the third-party reviews have been ongoing, hopefully wrapping up that process soon. The Harvard Street entrance culvert design, I think the vice-chair stated it's a conservation matter. We do have a culvert proposed for that driveway on the latest plans, and that'll be reviewed by Conservation as part of their notice of 10. The two trash enclosures, obviously, we've spoken about, I believe the applicant feels two is sufficient, but we've heard the comment that, you know, additional one would be suggested. The sewer and drain line comments, just the minor tweaks to the manhole locations and alignment of the pipes, which we've made on the latest plans. The bio-retention basin pipe outlet, again, just some grading modifications to make sure, to show that that pipe is draining the way we want it to. The deep-hole soil tests were something that we also heard from the third-party peer review, which have been completed at each of the stormwater basins. The I&amp;I removal remediation for sewer, this is a, we've spoken engineering about it a bit, and something we're gonna coordinate prior to construction. At that time, it's basically remediating, the city will identify remediation efforts or repairs of sewer manholes or sewer lines, or things along those lines, based on the sewer impact, so that'll be kind of off-site improvements to sewer. I believe that was the bulk of DPW anyways.
Okay. Just so that you know, all of these comments from the different departments will be included in our requirements, or the conditions of approval. Okay, do I have any other from the board, any questions? Okay, at this time, I'd like to open it up to the audience.
We do have one letter. I don't know if you want to read that first into the record?
Sure.
It's from Steve White.
Yes, I saw that. I'll find it.
Let's see, we got too many papers.
Um, yes, it's from Stephen White, 35, Scenic Drive in Leominster. "I ask you to please consider my input on the proposed development of the large apartment complex at the Orchard Hill Park property. While many residents have concerns related to the impact of the development to wetlands, public safety, city finances, and the environment and quality of life for city residents, one of my main concerns is related to traffic impacts, traffic management, and public safety. Given the current challenges and issues with traffic in Ward 1, the city and possibly state need to conduct a detailed traffic analysis on adding 400 units of apartments behind Target in addition to the future impact of the MBTA Hosts Community Housing Requirements in Ward 1, another 400 units of housing on Lancaster Street, and any other housing development plans being considered. Should also include the likely redevelopment of the mall at Whitneyfield. The city is already gridlocked in numerous locations at many times during the day, especially at the intersections of 13 and Prospect, the intersection of Lawrence and Prospect Streets, and the intersection at Harvard, Mechanic, and Old Union Turnpike, which is also a main access point to Route 2. Another significant problem, another significant problem area, particularly in the afternoon and at peak commute times, is where 2 and 190 come together. The poor design of this merge of two major arteries significantly impairs travelers' access to North Leominster and forces people to exit at the Mechanic, Harvard Streets exit. Conducting a detailed traffic assessment prior to advancing with the proposed development is critical. Traveling around the city in Ward 1 is particularly, in particular, is already very challenging. While I'm not a traffic mitigation specialist, my many years and experience traveling these roads supports the likely need to install either a traffic light or rotary at the intersection of Harvard, Mechanic, and Old Turnpike, Old Union Turnpike. Changing the existing traffic light on Harvard at the intersection at the entrance up to the shopping complex to a rotary might also be necessary to propose, to properly mitigate the significant increased traffic, which is already very heavy and gridlocked at times, especially during the Christmas holidays, due to the increased traffic trying to access the shopping complex. Based on some preliminary research, my understanding is the cost of one rotary is in the multimillion-dollar range. Any cost for traffic mitigation should be covered by the developer and not the city. Carefully reviewing the impact of this development on the quality of life of individuals and the community of Leominster is crucial and part of the planning board's mission. Thank you for your intention to this important matter affecting all the residents of the city. Stephen White."
Do I have any, okay, do we have any other, I think that's the only one we received, right?
Correct.
I will open it up to the audience.
Yes.
Dean's got a question?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Do you want comments from the board before you go to the audience?
Yes, we have.
All right, well, I have a couple of issues. One is the location of the post office. Now, I'm assuming that the U.S. Postal Service is going to drop all of the mail off at one location, and everybody in the complex has to go to that post office in order to pick up their mail. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So if I'm coming home from work, and I were inclined to go pick up my mail on the way home, I would not use Orchard Park Drive Extension. I would use Harvard Street, along with 200 or 300 other automobiles who'll be doing the same thing. And I don't see with this adequate parking there, and I think you're gonna create a logjam of people trying to collect their mail on their way home.
Okay.
The other thing is, there's not a lot of parking for the pool area and the proposed clubhouse. Now, I suppose people using the pool, a lot of them may walk, but that's a long distance from some of the residences. So I don't know how that's going to work out either. But I'm terribly concerned about the traffic going to the post office in the afternoon, and that's gonna create traffic all the way down to Harvard Street, maybe even onto Harvard Street, where people are queued to try to get in there.
Okay. I know, let him answer that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, so, to clarify, I believe the comment is about the mail and package room, not-
Right.
Wouldn't refer to as a post office. It's, so, the location is across from the clubhouse, so that's, the clubhouse is where the property management staff will be housed. And so what you want, you want to have eyes on, you know, that building. And there's always, you know, issues or questions from package delivery folks about, you know, overflow, or I can't access the room to drop off packages. You want to have, you know, within proximity of where the property, property management staff sit. So that's why it's across from the clubhouse area. As far as when people come home from work, so, you know, the time and location of where people work has changed dramatically. And so we don't have anymore these times at the same one-hour, you know, marker in the morning and the afternoon, where everybody leaves the site and comes home from the site. People are working different shifts. Obviously, people are working remotely, either full-time or part-time throughout the week. And so, we, we do not experience this rush on the way home from work, queuing, you know, in our mail and package or our clubhouse facilities. That just, that doesn't happen in any of other, other properties. I can understand the question and why that might be a concern, but in practicality, that's, that's not how it operates on a daily basis. People are spread out, their trips throughout the day. They may get, go home and coming back and pick it up in the evening, or, again, just the different hours of work hours has just made it such that people aren't coming and going from the site at the same time anymore.
I was, as that question was brought forward, and I was saying, that it's in, this general location here, you have a garage. Could that garage, could that garage be switched to the mail center and the garage put where the mail center is now? You wouldn't lose a garage, but your mail center would be central, pretty much central to your facility. And people in this far end, you know, could go right there, and traffic would then not be required to go in off of Harvard Street.
Right.
They could come off either end. And if you had a, you know, a central facility. And I could see it would take up about the same space.
Right.
Approximately, I don't know if it actually is, but-
Yeah.
Just looking at the picture, it does.
It doesn't address his concern about package safety.
Well, package safety, we'd have to address that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there are ways to deal with that. We have cameras, basically. Our, our systems are basically set up on like a key fob system, where you get a, you get a notification on your phone that a package has arrived, strictly about packages, not mail, but you get a notification on your phone, says you have a package, you go down to the center, you open the door with a key fob, you're on camera. So there is security, don't get me wrong. Our preference would be to have that within, you know, eyesight of property management. Your point is valid, though, on the location of the site. I, I can't answer that that is an appropriate location, just looking at it offhand, but we can certainly revisit that and take a look and, and see if that makes sense.
Yeah, okay, I mean, I can't, neither, just seem that that would be, I look at apartment-sized buildings as a swap, and without changing the facility much, you accomplish that.
Yeah, my, my concern, just looking at it offhand, would be parking for that building, specific to people pulling in and, you know, stopping for their mail and then going to their buildings. But again, we can, we can take a look at that and see if it's feasible.
Yeah, it seems like, so you got a grassy area there, and without changing buildings, I think, I don't know. You know, you wouldn't have to get into the wetlands. Just an idea, that's all.
Yeah, no, we understand the comment. It, it's a, it's a good question, we'll take a look at it.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, okay. Do I have any other? Dean all set?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Members all set? Okay, we'll go to the audience. Please, I'll try to respect everybody, okay, give everybody a chance to speak. Please go up to the podium, identify yourself and where you live, okay, so that, and so that we can have, so that our secretary can get the key track. Does not necessarily mean you have to be a resident of Leominster.
Okay, my name is Kim Brady. I live at 214 Harvard Street. I will be right behind this, this development. Derby Farm is the oldest, was the oldest farm on the street, but I live in the old Stockwell Farm. My house was built roughly around 1850. So it's been there, I haven't been there that long. Only, I have only, I have only been there 60 years. This, this is, this house has been there a lot longer. I do know the story of Augustus Gates, kind of a, kind of a, kind of a neat story.
Good, fill me in.
He farmed this land. I believe he lived in my house. I'm, and I'm not positive about that. If it wasn't my house, then he must have lived in Derby's house. You know, it was one of the other. And yes, he did die there. He is not buried there. I did bury, I did, I did go by this, this stone a couple days ago. Just, I was curious, still there. I've been by it a few times with my kids in the last few years, so, just a kind of a neat focal or forelum of Leominster that, that, you know, and he did, he did, he died, you know, quite a long time ago. I think my daughter could probably speak a little more about that a little bit, and she researched it more than I did. You know, just, just kind of neat. I think a lot of this will impact anyone on my side of the street. It'll in fact impact the whole, our whole community, but people that live on our side of the street, it's gonna be in our backyard. Right now, in the winter, we can see Target's lights through our, through the, through the trees. So now you're talking about putting these pieces of property between Target and our house, okay? So that's even closer. So now we're gonna have these three, four-story buildings in our, in our backyard. Literally, they will be abutteness. It's not gonna, it's not gonna be pretty. We're just, you know, to get, to have change in a community is one thing, okay? We have Sky Lane, we have Target, but when is enough enough that you're taking this, this piece of property and you're, and you're jamming it in between, you know, a community, a neighborhood that's already there, and a development that's, you know, we just can't put in every little, in every little nook and cranny of the city. I know that you're saying that Boston is coming, or the state is coming down on you to put in more housing, okay? Let them put it in Lancaster, or Lunenburg, or, you know, Leominster has put their share of housing in. There's streets everywhere. There's new streets, Sky Lane, off Prospect, we know, I mean, you know. I mean, all of these new developments, I mean, we've, we've brought on our share of, of housing, you know? How much more can Leominster do? How much more can their, can their schools, you know? I mean, there's just, there's so much that's going on here. I mean, enough, enough is enough. You know, we can't, we can't take on much more. You know, Leominster, I mean, I, you want more, you wanted to see how you could get more money from this parcel of land, you know, with digital and whatever, okay? We get that, but when is enough money for the city, you know, that it's gonna affect the community and the neighborhoods? You know, so I, 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 let's just slow things down.
Thank you, Kim. Gentleman over here in the, oh.
Hello.
Hello?
I recently purchased 284 Harvard-
Name and address, please.
My name is Connor, Connor Byrne. I recently purchased 284 Harvard Street in December. Quick. Well, I was just gonna say, quick thank you to Sean. So I saw Baco come through the path near the plaza, and they were digging tassepits. I had a quick phone call to a couple of my neighbors, and, I mean, the turnout here is fantastic, phenomenal. So thank you very much for the support. Everything I'm gonna say is fact. I'm gonna let everybody else speak to the look or the, you know, the traffic. So at 284 Harvard Street, there are two undocumented vernal pools on my property. One has standing water in early spring at five feet, the other has standing water in early spring at two feet. Both of these have been brought to the Conservation Commission, and I was going to submit this packet to Natural Heritage, but recently, this weekend, I found endangered species on the property, namely yellow-spotted salamanders. I've sent these pictures to Natural Heritage for documentation and for identification. I believe further work is required in order to certainly say whether or not these nine apartment buildings will impact valuable wetlands and vernal pools which need to be protected and fall under the, I think it's MESA or the Endangered Species Act. There's a couple of them in there. So, without further ado, I'll open the floor to anybody else who wants to come take a look. And I, actually, I welcome your environmental people to come walk the property. I can show you exactly where they are. Conservation agent came down, and he looked at the vernal pools, he said, "Ooh, I think we need a species survey, and I can't do that until the spring."
Are you saying that located on this property?
284. So, so one of the vernal pools, actually, the, the main one, the five-foot one, is on my property. It's on my abutting neighbor's property, and actually goes through the stone wall and is on this 18-acre lot. It runs parallel with the stone wall for about 50 feet. I welcome you. I mean, you, you look at the basin, it's there, there's, there's a very clear muddy bottom, wetlands, and you're planning on, what, having apartment buildings 15 feet from the stone wall? Are you kidding me? For shame.
Okay. I don't live in Leominster anymore, but I own property.
Name and address for the record, please.
John Kane, and I'm, I own a piece of property at 265 Harvard. John, how you doing?
All good.
Fellow decky, how you doing? You should know me, I know you. Just to, I want to give you a little correction on some of the digital history, okay?
Okay.
Because I started there in 73, before, before you. Where Orchard Hills is, right there?
Yep.
The development and the land that you're looking for and so forth, that was all owned, I believe, by Derby.
That's correct.
Okay, I went to school with the kids, and the four girls and all that stuff. I've been in the area since 1961 on, on that address, so if you want to know stuff, I can take you to where Augustus, that marker is, been there, know where it is, okay? He's right, there's a lot of natural stuff there and so forth, but the thing with digital, okay, the property that you're talking about, the butt stat on the other side of the, of the mall, was owned by a guy by the name of David Hopper.
Right.
He owned Hopper's farm, and he was my milkman when I was a little kid, and he lived there, okay?
He still lives.
I'm sorry, his son.
His wife still lives on Harvard Street.
His son lives there.
His son lives there now.
Right, okay, he was the mayor of Leominster for a while.
That's correct.
I know David, his dad, okay, and stuff like that, and I own, I know Junior. The property that they were talking about is where, and he did, then Digital did spend a million dollars for it, it's down on one, it's right there at the intersection of Lancaster Road and 117, where all the soccer fields are.
No, that, that was a separate, that was after.
That was what they bought, but that's what they bought for a thousand, for a million dollars, he did not, he did not buy.
No, 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 let me, let me, it's two different times, because I worked for Digital, okay? What I'm talking about, they were proposing the building that they actually built in Westminster back in the early 70s, to build it here. I don't know if they had real plan, oh yeah, and then they came into a plan later on to build a plant over in Lancaster at the intersection of Route 70.
Right, they bought Marlborough instead.
But it was two different, two different plans.
They bought Marlborough instead of building.
Exactly.
In 117 and so forth, and stuff like that. So, anyway, just wanted to kind of like straighten that out, because that's what they wanted to build. They never, ever, ever wanted to build where, where you guys got that going there, okay? So, I just need to ask, I want to ask some questions.
Go ahead.
Has, did anybody do a percolation test for the land and stuff?
Yeah, that was all done.
That was all done?
That was done with the, with peer review.
And what was the, did they, when they did the percolation test, that whole area is riddled, and it's all built on ledge, okay? So, you know, you talked about Ridgewood Drive, when they built that, I was a little kid, they pretty much had the dynamite, half of the foundations that they put out there because of the ledge.
In Digital?
No, 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 this is, this is right, right off of Harvard Street, Ridgewood Drive and so forth, and right, and right there.
Ridgewood, I don't know about Ridgewood.
Okay, well, it's.
Yeah, I don't have any idea.
It's a quarter mile from that site.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Okay, but it's, everything is riddled with ledge, so did they find any ledge? Because if they do, they're going to have to blast.
No.
So there were no, there was no ledge? Was there something, was, did anybody check for it or anything? I'm just asking that.
Go ahead, answer the question.
Yeah, sure, we did soil evaluations, which were for the, for the storm line, or there's been some geotechnical.
Yeah, speak more into the mic, please.
Yeah, we did soil evaluations for the stormwater, we dug down 10 feet, we didn't hit ledge, it's part of those test pits, and I know there's been a geotech investigation as well, they often go deeper, and I don't believe they found ledge, I'm not anticipating blasting at this time, I don't believe it.
Okay, that's fine, you might be in for a surprise. I know all that area, and also, like, when you said the mall there, that's, that's there, Target and stuff like that, nothing was ever, because Derby owned that, nothing was ever sliced off the top of it.
Oh, yes, it was.
I used to, I used to, there was Apple Watchers there, and I used to go and ride snowmobiles and minibikes and motorcycles and all that stuff when I was growing up as a teenager, through those Apple Watchers. So I know for a fact, because I looked at the walls that are in the back, where they're going to border that, that mall, they're at the same height that they were before, when I was a kid. So, I'm just letting you know that they didn't take anything off the top, they, they didn't anything, it was only to put the foundations in for the buildings and stuff like that. They didn't strip, they didn't strip anything off the top.
Make the difference.
Orchard Hills was the same deal, when they put the roller skating rink in, they actually didn't, they may have.
That's a different, I can't talk to, I can talk to the hill.
But it's still part of, it's still part of the whole scenario.
The story on the hill was, it came down, I think, I think they took 35 feet off the top of that hill. Yes, original drawings.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. So I have someone else.
Hi, my name is Sung Jung Park, and I live in 50 Sky Lane, and I apologize to the lady, I live in Sky, and it's not a street. Maybe felt bad.
I have a couple of questions for you, sir.
Yes.
As you know, the mall sits in a landfill flattened out, on the backside, all the way around is held by a retaining wall that is supported by cables, or, some kind of lattice of cables, right?
Right.
Is this apartment complex going to be same elevation as that apartment, mall, or you're going to use the lay of the land?
Do you have any insight?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think more or less use the lay of the land.
So, if I look out to the Target, it will be lower than the Target itself, so behind the apartment building, it's housing the Target also, right, the mall?
I'm not sure I understand the question, but I could tell you that the proposed buildings are more or less aligned with existing topography.
Okay. Just a couple of questions that I really need to understand, so you're going to basically plow over this wetland?
No, no, wetlands will be taken care of, and specifically controlled by the Conservation Commission.
Well, that's, that's a question I have, what did you guys do the water test? Did you ever come by when it's raining? How was the last time when we had the flood in this city? I mean, that's, that's a lot of storms that have been coming through here, and I don't know if you guys noticed, from Stage Coast Drive, the ridge line that runs above this area, the slope is pretty steep. When it rains, there's a Niagara Falls water that comes down the cliff, down to Sky Lane, then goes drains off towards Harvard Street. It goes left and right. I live on the backside of Sky Lane with this wetland. It soaks out water so well, it can be diverted, diverted off to my northeast side, where is the back corner of the Target, where there's a 40-foot retaining wall part of the Target, and this big drainage dish that goes underneath Orchard Hill Drive, then goes down to the cliff or towards the MBTA railroads. Then the other part of the water goes, some of my neighbors here, diverse to the south, goes all the way down to the drainage pipe some gentleman was talking about, underneath the Harvard Street. Now, obviously, this is not going to mean a dirt road, I mean, it's going to be concrete, asphalt, so water's going to go somewhere. You know, I've been flooded before in Tennessee, really, 15 years ago, and I can tell you, water will find every which way to flood your home if it gets a chance. And what I see here is a disaster in the making, anything, anybody that lives below Sky Lane, you better get a flood insurance just in case. Seriously, that's one issue. Two, the traffic, you know, somebody mentioned on the letter, the holiday traffic is a murder. A holiday, it's a parade. From November on, all the way to January 1st, it's a parade of cars that goes through the mall, almost 24 hours a day. And the funny thing, this drawing has, there's an exit, well, back exit toward a new cul-de-sac that goes to the shop turn where the Orchard Hill Drive is. You know, these people are going to go to work in rush hours, I assume, right? And a lot of them are going to realize, there's a Dunkin' Donuts down the street. And guess what they're going to do? They're not going to take Harvard Street, why? They're going to hit the signal light, they're going to take the back way, right where you guys live, and they're going to take that left. You know, I would love to just sit there and just score them as to how bad your accident was. That three-way is, well, if you just spend five minutes, you see how fast cars come around the corner, and if they take that left, there's history. That's two. Three, well, I know you guys talked about animals and such, we don't hardly have animals coming dry yachts no more. I mean, we used to see turkeys, bears, bobcats, deers, everywhere. Ever since this cul-de-sac project that we're going to put up, they all disappeared. I mean, that's, I think that's, I mean, it's one of my reasons living in Leominster, having that little piece of country that, that really doesn't exist anymore. It's a great city, and you want to overrun that with concrete and asphalt and more apartments? You know what, I used to say, those people who used to not in my backyard are assholes. I'm sorry, but this time, I guess I am too. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Haley Brady, I recently purchased.
And address also for the record?
Recently repurchased the home at 200 Harvard Street.
Thanks.
I've grown up on this street, lived here all my life, I've seen the new developments and the, the way they happen, I can absolutely guarantee you that there are wetlands back there, I just walked them 20 minutes before I came in here. All you have to do is take a quick walk in the trails to see how much life and amphibians and things are living back there. Not only that, looking at their plans, you're putting 330,000 feet of concrete surface on top of group C, D soils that don't handle stormwater runoff very well. We just saw with this last flood in 2023, how outdated those systems are, our, half our city was underwater. This is risky, with all the wetlands being fed into it, FEMA just recently updated their flood maps, there's a new flood zone right, right next to the entrance to this project. I really ask that we take a little bit of time, put this on hold, and do some more data, like, do some more testing. It's, it's outdated, it's, doesn't reflect the reality. The hydrology completely changed after that flood, and I think we, we owe it to the neighborhood to take some time and make sure it's actually accurate now. I, I hate to see this, you're throwing high-density housing into a quiet neighborhood, and I can speak to Augustus Gates, his graves back there. One time, his family owned pretty much all of the street, his daughter's huge women's rights advocates back in the 1900s, he died at the age of 70, just tending to his pasture, which is quite a feat in 1894. If I didn't find his marker, I would have never researched him, seen what he did for the city, seen the contributions his family made, I would have never known about him, and neither would anybody. That's going to be ripped apart, the history of the place is done, and I'm sorry for the property taxes that we pay, can we have a little bit of peace without traffic? And I, I know you did do some traffic analysis on, you know, right the entrance, but please, drive up Harvard Street a little bit, I walked along it yesterday, you can't widen the street, there are no, you can't put sidewalks in, it's like scary, I can imagine you're trying to walk with your kid, you, you can't, it's, somebody is going to get killed there. It's, you can't make it safer, and I think an increase in this traffic is, is just dangerous and irresponsible, but, thank you.
Thank you.
I only range for mayor. You wouldn't want.
My name is Chris Fitzgerald, I live at 50 Sky Lane, I'm married to the angry guy that just came up here. My, my concern's a little bit different, you didn't, they were talking about the fire department, okay, and Fall River just had a fire, where people were lost, and they found out that eight of their 10 stations were understaffed, okay? Are we going to have more emergency personnel? Are we going to have another fire station closer? You're talking about fire engines getting up the street, what about February? My father was fire chief of Cambridge, which is very, very dense, a lot of multiple alums, a lot of high structures, okay? It was so bad in Cambridge that the fire, that they have streets that you can only park on one side, because the fire, the fire trucks couldn't get out. Sometimes on Mass Ave, they had to go the opposite way of traffic, the fire engine. So, that, that's what I would like to know, how is public service going to be increased for the increased needs?
She did ask a question on, on public service, and if I can remember correctly, there was a plan to work with the bus company, with Mark, to have a bus, bus service come through here, so that, that question hadn't come up before, so I did say that it does a, it is planned.
Hi, I'm Kate Heenan, 284 Harvard Street, also one of the properties directly abutting the new development. I just had a couple of clarifying questions, just so I can understand, you know, what's going on a little bit better. We did notice, like, a yellow crane or something right in our backyard, and we didn't know what it was, so I guess one of my first questions is, will abutting residents be notified about important milestones in the future, about any other work being done?
We would keep, the planning board would have that information on, on how they progress, but we, traditionally, we haven't, if somebody requests something, I think we could work out something.
So it's, it can be public knowledge?
Let me try to, I'll try to give you a thumbnail of what the sequence is, the best I can. Sequence is that we're here tonight, where there were a lot of questions, we have the, and primarily the questions that have come up with traffic, and we've had the traffic studies, and, and conservation, and I think the big thing is, is conservation is going to have their say on this, on the vernal pools and, and the animals that are found in the area, and that's, you know, that's, that's their bailiwick, and I really don't want to cross. Once, once a project is approved, and you have to remember, this, this board or this project is site planned, we really have to eventually approve it almost, is because we can ask your conditions, but it's site planned, because in the, in the planning, in the ordinance of this city, the ordinance of the city, of the city council, done by, not by us, say that if you meet certain requirements, you can in fact build on this property. We want to make sure it's built as best I can. Once it's built, okay, we then allow the developer to get, get started, and the DPW will follow more than we will, as far as they get into the infrastructure and put in the sewer lines, the water lines, and they have inspectors that follow all of that work, and periodically will get updates, but not that much, okay? So really, there isn't the, we would not get involved once, until they start wanting to occupy buildings, then we make sure that certain work is done, and then the planning board will give them. And then the planning board would give them authority with the building department to occupy a building. But substantial amount of work has to be done prior to that. But we have not, we do not have any requirements to, say, get updates.
Okay.
Their requirement- Well, the updates are primarily the building inspector, the building department. Because once we, and once it's approved, then it's up to the building department to make sure, primarily the building department and DPW, to make sure everything is followed through, okay? And we try to make sure there are any, any parts that, you know, that it's consistent and, and any, that our conditions are followed through. So, we follow through with that part.
So, I don't know if I heard correctly, but did you say that essentially the town has to approve it? Like, there's no way that you can reject it? You're saying that it absolutely will be? There's, so the town doesn't have say?
We have say on the, on the conditions and the traffic and site plan, and we can, but this, this is a, as I had said earlier, this is a board of permitted uses. And as this plan was laid out 20 years ago, multiple buildings were, a residential area was allowed in that area. So, yes, you know, you're right. Is, we have to make sure things are right. We have to make sure it's mitigated. You've seen questions that we've had this evening on, on mail and traffic and making sure you got right turns and left turns, not only in, in Lemonster, but also Lancaster. And to make sure that the best we can, that what has been allocated by the city is, is best met and that we meet and we do listen to the neighbors so that we can mitigate anything. Of something that comes up, things have come up on traffic, and there's been a lot about the wetlands. I'm concerned about the wetlands myself. And the conservation is gonna have to take a long, hard look at that, especially on the rental pools and, and the animals like that. But the, I hate to say it, I have said it earlier, that if all the conditions are met, approval will be made on this project.
So, it doesn't matter if we don't want them in our backyard? We don't want that?
Is there a timeline that's been hard committed to?
What's that?
Is there like a hard timeline, like they're planning to build then, but what if certain design changes need to be made? Will that be pushed back? Will they actually take due diligence to make sure that-
Once everything is approved, they will come to us with a timeline, okay, and they would build.
So, that's post-approval? But is there, is there pressure to get it approved by a certain date?
No.
No? Okay.
And, and you, you questioned, yes, it's, it's the, as far as the planet, you know, the, we have to make sure all the conditions we have are taken care of, okay? And yes, I'm sorry to say it, folks, it's, if this was a special permit, okay, then I could say, yes, because we could, special permits, we can't turn down. But this is not a special permit. This is a site plan approval as it was done before. But we can make sure that all the conditions are met. And we can make it pretty difficult for a developer. Sometimes we've done things and we've asked things for developers, and they get to a point where they say, it's not economically feasible, and then they back out. That's happened in the past too. So, I'm not saying I'm looking for that. I'm not. I'm just looking to cover the bases that we have before us.
Sean, if I could add something to that too, I just want, many of the concerns that were raised tonight will have to come up before the Conservation Commission, which they have not appeared before yet. And they have a lot more options than we do to deal with many of the, the concerns that are raised. So, just bear that in mind, that this is not your only bite at the apple, that there will be another opportunity.
No, that's, that's great to know. I don't know how much more time we have, but I just had maybe one more.
No, that's all right. Go ahead.
Okay. So, the noise, maybe noise and visual mitigation between the abutting properties, I think, was brought up at some point. Is there, or like tree planting, I think I heard. But as someone had pointed out earlier, like especially in the wintertime, we just moved in in January.
Right.
As much as I love Target, you know, I go all the time. We can kind of see the light through the trees, and, I mean, we love wintertime, we love summertime. That's why we live in New England, and we chose to stay in New England. So, I guess, especially since we are one of the main abutters, the stone wall is our backyard line. What, exactly how tall are these trees? Is that known yet? And like, how dense will that be? And is that supposed to be the only defense for noise as well?
Well, the buildings, what essence is, there's a, I forgot what the number is right now. I don't wanna say anything because I'll probably be wrong. There, there is, I think it's a 30-foot buffer, okay, between the property line and their first construction, which is the parking, okay? Or in some cases, it's the garages that are lower, you know, they're only garage height, you know, 20 feet, I don't know, 15 feet.
There's a 15-foot buffer between the stone wall and the parking lot.
But that's to the, to the lot, to the driveways. You have parking cars, and then it's another, you know, 20 or 30 feet to the, the actual apartment, to the actual building, okay? And so, yes, you know, those distances we, we do have, and they, they, what they have there meets the criteria that was set down.
But how-
You can't, no yelling out, please. If you wanna come up and speak, I'll allow you to speak.
Are the height of the trees, and like, is that all planned out already, or is that still to be determined?
What's that?
Like, I guess the height of the trees and, like, what it'll visually look like for, like, all the backyards?
I don't know. Go ahead. I want you to answer.
I don't know if that's designed yet.
I'm not sure exactly. The question is, I mean, there's a natural tree buffer that'll be left in place, and then we'll be planting trees. We have garages, as the chair noted, and then you'll get to the residential buildings. But I'm not sure exactly what trees are-
There are, there are trees currently, because it's woods behind, all, all right there is woods, essentially. So, you will be tearing down a lot of trees that are currently buffering between a lot of the properties, us including, into where Orchard Hill is. No, I, I understand that. Just currently, there, there are lots of trees beyond the stone wall that help buffer noise and site. So, I was just wondering-
The only noise, there is a, a city ordinance as far as construction is concerned. And I think it starts at 7:00 in the morning, and it can't be more than a, a certain noise level and, and to sunset, okay? And no work on, unless it's emergency work on weekends. So, there is an ordinance, I, I don't wanna quote it, you can, you know, look it up in the city ordinance, but there is a, an ordinance on noise, okay? There is there, so I don't know exactly what the, what the details are, but it is there. There is also a lights, a lighting standard that we have in the city. So, that, that any lights on that side is, we try, we do not have any lighting that crosses into your property. So, everything will be downlighted. I think we got a 20-foot high, or, you know, it's not a really high pole that they can use. And, and all night, we make as much lighting back towards the property and away from the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. If there's time, I do have one more question.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, will there be another traffic study that's not in January?
Not that I know of. No, I'm not. It's not planned at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
How's it going? Name is Sean Landry, 276 Harvard Street. Most of my questions are more for the builders than anything, if this actually does get approved and goes through, is, everyone keeps bringing up the, the intersection that's further down by like the old Lancaster Gulf there. That's not the main concern for majority of the traffic. Majority of the traffic is always gonna be up by the Orchard Hill intersection there. It also keeps getting forgotten about the on-ramp going onto Route 2 West, which is the longest on-ramp on Route 2, and everybody still comes to a complete dead stop there. That traffic typically backs up to the intersection, not further past it on any normal traffic day. When we're looking at, say, 7 to 9, not 2:00 AM in the morning, which is kind of what seems like the traffic study was actually taken as. So, what's actually happening with that? Are we gonna put in another type of, uh, traffic light over there? Or is that just gonna be forgotten about? Hopefully, nobody leaves at the same exact time between 7 to 9 AM every single day? Or is it just gonna get drawn?
Route 2 West.
Yeah, there, there are no plans to put a traffic signal there now.
Good. All right. So, everyone's gonna come to a full stop, as we already see happens every single day. Never mind all the new people that come in that still know how to drive. Next question. Schools. Has anyone actually done a study with how many students are per classroom? Currently, right now, I know there's in between 25 to 30 students per classroom in a normal classroom. If you have another 370 units go here, say, even just one child per household, that's just one. There's another 375 students going into every single school that's already overcrowded. Never mind the other projects going up down Lancaster Street, 475 apartments down there. Again, now you have one more student per classroom, that's another 475 students going in there. Right now, there is 1,600 students in Lemonster. Over, what is it, 18 schools, I think few of those are kindergartens, preschools, so those are a little bit less populated. Lemonster High School has 35-ish students on average per room. Right now, we just did the Lemonster High School back in 2011, 2012. We did a full remodel in that whole school. Nothing was ever expanded. Same exact classrooms that are still there. You still had 30 students when I was going back in 2010. There's 30 and 35 students in most classrooms right now. Any studies done on that? Probably not. Is there gonna be any new schools going in? Also, probably not. I know Fall Brook is up on the market right now for trying to get that thing rebuilt. But again, that's one elementary school on the south side of Lemonster, not the north side of Lemonster. We have Northwest, Johnny Appleseed, and Skyview. Those are all the three middle schools that we have up there, elementary, figure what they are. But again, everyone's going to the same one high school that we have. Third, snow removal. I know we already went over that. What are you gonna do with it?
You speak into the mic, please.
Uh, snow removal. What are you gonna do with that one there? So, you already have, the only corners on that map right there that are not either gonna be dumping snow onto everybody's property, which obviously we know that can't happen. The only other place to put that would be into the wetlands, which is, we already know is illegal. Number two with that one, what are you gonna do for trying to get any type of mitigation with ISO there? If you're putting salt down there, you have a burr running right through the middle, as well as salting right next to all the wetlands as well. The only way around that would have to be do a full pervious pavement, which we already know that's five to six times more in cost, just a standard asphalt pavement. Or you'd have to do a full underground radiation system, which is gonna be a major cost on electric, electricity and gas, which we already know, again, city can't handle that extra load. And the, the underground radiation itself is ridiculously expensive. You're looking at about $25 per square foot for a full heating system. Correct.
Yeah.
And those are the major questions that I have for this project right now, if it does actually go up. What are we actually gonna be doing with all these extra people? And again, the whole 120 cars per hour, that's, we know that's not gonna be accurate.
Yeah. Well, we agree with you on the snow removal. A couple of our members have brought that up, and that, that's still not, I haven't seen an answer to that. They, they will have to come in with a management plan for it. And, but we also require on our drawings that there has to be some on-site locations. And they're, they're high pressed to have any. So, I'm not sure what the answer is on that.
I think that was the majority of my questions. Can't remember anymore, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, hello. My name is Haley Bush. I live at 219 Harvard Street. I do wanna say thank you all for your time. It's gonna, it's a long meeting. And it's nice to see all of your faces rather than your backs back there, but nice to meet you. So, I did do a speech. I was gonna send a letter, but I felt it may, maybe a bit more personable face-to-face. So, I'm here to express my opposition to the multifamily development on 86 Orchard Hill Park Drive. I moved here only three years ago, so I can't really speak to the history of Lemonster. But I have to say, I was immediately struck by the community and especially my neighbors on Harvard Street. They welcomed me with open arms, and this town is unlike anything that I've seen in my young life. But I am extremely appreciative that my niece and my nephews are able to grow up in a town like this, surrounded by a community like this. The current plan for dense multifamily housing puts, is risking putting real strain on Lemonster's already stretched public schools, as some have brought up. We want our classrooms where teachers can give them real attention, and the teacher-to-student ratio is acceptable. And, you know, just like personable, so students get a good education. It's by adding hundreds of new residents that will impact more than just the class sizes. What about the buses, cafeteria capacity, special education resources, and the spillover traffic from all of the schools neighboring, especially Johnny Appleseed? Leading up to Main Street, I dropped my nephew off there once, and I was stuck for 20 minutes. It was horrible. But busing, going back to that, where, where would you add a bus stop there? Are all of the families meant to go down to Harvard Street or Orchard Hill Park Extension and meet up there, queuing their cars right there? Or are you gonna have a bus maneuver its way onto the property and have multiple stops?
Well, I can answer that, as, as we require maneuvering for fire trucks, which are larger.
Right, yes.
Okay. And so, and, and when we talk about fire trucks, we're not talking about the regular fire trucks. We're talking about the hook and ladder, okay, which is their largest and biggest piece of it. So, a, a bus sort of falls into that same general category. And I, I can't speak to the school department because they set it up. But my guess is, in the central part of the, a bus would be able to transit through their property and make a loop around, probably.
Right. It'd go all the way around, 'cause my nephew goes, they go down Harvard Street, they turn around behind. I'm not exactly sure what the streets are. I'm horrible with locations. But they turn around on that street, they go back up Harvard Street. So, yeah, they just have to go all the way around. Okay, I get that. Thank you. And then, that, it does bring me to safety, because the new proposed outlet onto Harvard Street would increase congestion and speeding in the area. I live right there. I have to back out of my driveway with a blind spot at the bottom of a hill. What would be done to try to mitigate that? Because yes, you're going to put a left-only out, right-only in. But does the driveway actually reflect that? Is there going to be actual ways to stop it? Because people are gonna do what they want, regardless. So, they're gonna, they're gonna come from Prospect onto Harvard Street. And it's, nobody's gonna listen to a sign, sorry. Is there like an actual design so people can't turn left coming from Prospect onto Harvard?
Well, I mean, it's gonna be marked that way.
Marked, yes.
Excuse me.
You're okay.
People can drive over painted lines.
Yes, as they do.
And some people don't appear to the, the signs. The majority of people would be pretty good, okay? What we're saying is, most of the traffic would be directed away from the neighborhood and down towards the major highway.
And I appreciate that attempt.
Will there some people go, go the other way? I live on Prospect Street. I'd probably make a right turn.
Yeah.
But I won't be coming out of there, so, but that's, you know.
Yeah, okay. And then, just the traffic reports, because it was done over there. Is it going to be done near the schools where that would also be impacted? Because it's, there's just no more traffic reports being done, okay?
The traffic report, not, no. I, I asked the question about schools, okay? And what the, and there are studies on that. And what I have come up with, or what I've been told in some of the studies I've done, is on a typical housing development, where you have, tend to have more families, okay? It's like one and a half kids per household, okay? This comes down to about .5, or, or less than that. Because you're gonna have a lot of retirees in a building like this. You also end up with a lot of just married or just a lot of single folks and these types of things. So, it's not as conducive to families as a single-family home. Not saying there won't be, 'cause there will be. I know there will be.
Right, there will be.
But it's, all depends which report you look at and what you're gonna come up with, okay? And I can, I'm sure I can find a report saying there's gonna be 300, okay? Who, who wrote it? I'm gonna find another report that said there're gonna be 12. And someplace in between is the answer, and I don't know what it is.
Right. All in the air. So, yeah, next, as many people have brought up, I'm gonna keep going. The wetlands, the habitat. It, it's, this is a habitat. It supports salamanders, other amphibians that just haven't properly been evaluated. Because the, what I saw on like site plans or something was that the, you're going based off of wetland delianation that was done in June 2022. As that was said earlier, the flooding that happened in September 2023, that was a declared state of emergency for Lemonster. Route Two, anything happens over there. It already floods at that Harvard junction onto, I'm horrible with the street names, don't get me wrong. But it flooded right there, stagecoach.
Having a stagecoach.
It was horrible over there for the flooding. We could not go. My sister was driving home from work at five o'clock when the flooding first started. It was all the way up to the sedan car doors. So that, it, things had to have shifted back there. And then it's these species that are back there and that are endangered, they often go unaccounted for, but they play a vital ecological role. You can't just replicate a habitat somewhere else. Replacement does not equal replication. So I also want to know about the wetland mitigation, according to the, um, Wetland Protection Act, because it's going to, it's supposed to be a one-to-one ratio. Have you submitted a formal proposal for that ratio to be, you know, like acknowledged?
That will be answered by the Conservation Commission.
The Conservation Commission, okay. And then, yeah, I mean, I understand that this is private property, the owner owns it, they have every right to use it, but as residents, we also have a right to ask for reasonable development that respects the capacity of our town. I understand you want to expand Lemonster, and it's great, it is the future, and this would bring money into Lemonster, but when would those funds be allocated back to the people of the town? Because it, it's just going to put so much of a strain on the systems that are already in place. When would those funds just go back to the people and help the school system and help the public safety and just everything like that?
Once the development is, is completed, okay? Uh, let's put this way, as the, the planning board would be working with the, uh, the Board of Assessors, you might say, and the Treasurer. And as buildings are accepted and put, let's say, put online, are people allowed to occupy them, at that point, they, they go on the tax rolls. Okay, so exactly how that works, I, I don't know. I, but I know that we've had homes like that when we do developments. So, you know, once they're accepted, they, and, once you finish the project, of course, and everything. And, and a developed project like that, I don't know. You're talking about a two-year build, three-year build?
No, it's, it's less than that.
Nineteen months?
Is it?
Just about.
Eighteen months.
Eighteen.
Plus or minus.
How many?
Could be eighteen months or less.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I was.
So that, once they go online, then they go on the tax rolls, and that's up to the tax, you know?
Right. I mean, at the very least, I was hoping we could set reasonable limitations so that a nationwide developer doesn't overwhelm our local infrastructure. Even something as simple as substituting the multifamily buildings for single-family homes, that would be a step towards growth that strengthens, strengthens the community rather than straining it. And I understand if all my words are kind of null and void at this point, because we didn't get a chance to come and give our opinion, when I guess it really mattered. Um, but, I mean, yeah, I do appreciate you all for listening. I do hope that you, just like.
Can I, I would like to correct something that you just said.
Okay.
We have had a number of open meetings. They have all been advertised in the paper, okay?
Sorry.
Okay, but they have, they have been advertised, okay? Uh, our, our agendas are online, okay? And they go into the city, and they go into the city. So there's nothing we, we're, and I can, Elizabeth could fill you in on exactly what we have for notifications. But there were a number of notifications as we started this project back in March.
I'm just very sad that it was a neighbor's flyer that got us to come back, but I just urge you all to consider the long-term impacts, not just permits and paperwork. And I understand only what you can really approve, but just in the real life of the residents who've lived here and the people who have supported this community since, you know, we've all been here. It's you guys, really. It's you guys who can help to make the right choice, and I really urge you to. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I won't be long, but go as long as you want.
You're all set, Bill.
Good evening. Um, Bill Brady, two fourteen Harvard Street. Um, I'm just going to, uh, the environmental's been covered and all that. I just got a, a few questions of the developer. You talked about traffic mitigation in Lancaster. Can you tell me the amount of money you plan to give Lancaster?
The, uh, the, the total cost through the improvements is around fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand dollars for that whole area? I don't think that's adequate. Uh, just there. Number two on the plan, could you show me where the dog park is proposed?
A what?
Dog park.
That'd be, um, the, on the far left of the plan.
Far left, could you point at it, please?
I had no idea.
Can people not, please don't show from the audience. Please come out. We're happy to hear all of you.
So that, right there's where the dog park. That looks to me, it's like an edge of the wetland. How are we going to allow fecal matter and urine to run right in? Is there going to be catch basins? Is it going to be artificial? Are you using national, uh, natural topography? Right now, they have signs everywhere, clean up after your dog. They don't listen to it. I'm just wondering how we can allow a dog park that close? Is it conservation? Maybe, but it's a dog park, it's on your plan, so I think it's the, uh, purview of the planning board.
Okay, yeah. I saw it, but I didn't register.
Okay, and just overall plan, these buildings are going to take a massive amount of construction material. How are you going to prevent any runoff while you're building it? The equipment's going to, some of those areas, the equipment's going to have to be on the wetland to build it. Where, this is the planning board. You, you're planning for gridlock, you're planning for environmental disaster. This has to be looked at. It needs to be downsized. Are oil-water separators in any of the plants? I didn't see them anywhere. For storm runoff.
On the drain.
On the storm runoff, because a car drips oil, drips antifreeze, uh, their separators, this is the time to do it, when you have to put in the retention.
Right.
Yeah, sure. Um, the catch basins will have deep sumps and hooded catch basins to catch oil and grease, and then ahead of the detention bases, we call them hydrodynamic separates, but they have an oil separating mechanism within them as well, as well as TSS.
Yeah, speak a little bit more into the mic, John.
Okay. And so you said the TSS. What's the percentage allowed?
With the.
From discharge into a wetland area?
You have to remove eighty percent of TSS removal.
Okay, and how is that going to be accomplished?
Um, through the drainage measures we mentioned earlier, the bio-retention areas, the catch basins, hydrodynamic separators, detention basins, and infiltration basins.
Okay, and who's responsible for maintaining these? And how do they access them if they're that close to the wetlands?
Uh, the owner is, um, and they'll have access via observation ports in the parking area, like manholes for the stuff that's there. The bio-retention areas are off the driveways.
We've all seen a lot of these developments, and we get all the promises. Please ensure this is done correctly. Right, when you were developing, now the quick question. Part of the MU two, multi-use, right? Isn't it a third, a third, and a third? A third commercial, a third industrial, and a third residential?
Right.
And isn't it supposed to be built in an order? Meaning, number one is commercial, then industrial, and each one has to be thirty-three percent? And then you do residential, okay? Just something to think about. I just needed clarification there. Also.
I, I, it's a good question. I don't think we ever had any sequence to it, because at the time we built it.
You might want to read the regs.
Okay.
There is a sequence.
Well, we, we say the third, the third, the third. Um, I don't remember, okay, that, that there was a sequence that we had in there, because we had no idea that, that what was going to happen to that, that property. We knew that we, we made a change to the ordinance to allow it. Uh, we were hoping that an industrial would come in first. But it's what the development comes in.
Speaking of that, is it proper for a residential area driveway to empty into an industrial area? Because by that plan, that's what it looks like.
That's a good point.
I believe, I believe another developer in town had trouble with that.
Yes.
Up by the registry and was sued. So let's not repeat.
Yeah, I, I, that's, that's, that's a good point. The, and I'm going to have to look at that again, because it just came up tonight, or you just brought it up, is we had, I don't know, and, and I'd be honest with you, is because, um, there is a, a ruling that, that says you can't go from a lesser to a more restrictive, um, plan. And I don't, uh, I don't have an answer to that, uh, or vice versa.
Okay, well, that, that should tell you right there.
Yeah.
We need to really slow this down and think about this. We have too many questions.
I think what happened there, is, is we have planned, we've, you know, this had been always planned as a multi-use, uh, facility, okay? So, um, being, and a mixed use, so I don't want to say I made the assumption, is I just said, then think of it, because it is mixed use, and I don't know what the criteria would be in that case, because it is not per se, you're going from residential to industrial, industrial to industrial, is you're going from a mixed-use facility to, um, to an industrial.
I don't see the difference between that project and this project.
To tell you the truth, that question came up, you, you brought the question up, we're going to have to answer. Maybe, uh, I hate to say it, I have my attorney here, I might as well use him, maybe he'll answer that question.
I'm not sure I understand the question. Generally, if you're accessing an industrial site from a residential district.
Did you, I might go. I just turned it on.
Is it on now? Yes. Generally, if you're accessing a commercial site or industrial site from a residential district, that's not allowed. If they're all in the same district, which I understand this is a mixed-use district, then generally the access would be considered consistent with the mixed use if they were accessing, um, you know, the site in general.
Mm-hmm.
If, if that's your question. The other project that may have been what was happening there, that they were using a differently zoned access to, um, access a commercial industrial site.
All right.
But I'm happy to check it.
Please do.
Please do.
And also the sequencing. I, I, I truly believe, how I read, I interpret it as commercial thirty-three percent complete, industrial thirty-three percent complete, and then residential.
In the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
So, Mr. Brady, I, this is, I don't see anything about sequence, but it does say, within our zoning ordinance under, this is MU two, correct?
Right.
Notwithstanding, uh, if a multifamily housing, if multifamily housing is proposed as part of a mixed-use project, it may be built within the same structure as a non-residential use, but may not be contained on the first floor. That's not, that's not where I, I just read it, and I can't find it now. Notwithstanding, uh, multifamily housing is not permitted unless there is a non-residential component to the mixed-use project, such as industrial, retail, or office space.
What's, what section is that?
Twenty-eight point three point two.
I don't know what section I read it, but I saw thirty-three and a third, a third, a third, a third. It's somewhere in there, unless I was hallucinating. By the way, it's good to see that many city council and, uh, potential city council members showing up. Um, I've received, I sent messages to all the councilors at large, spoke with everyone except one, didn't feel it was necessary to respond to me. Thank you, Roy Councilor, for being here. Sorry, I, while you were researching, I figured I'd do a commercial.
Thanks for that commercial break, Mr. Brady. Under general provisions under MU two, it does state under, Jason, twenty-eight point two point one, the multifamily housing component of a mixed-use project may not commence until the non-residential portion of the project is at least sixty percent complete, taking into consideration buildings previously constructed as part of a mixed-use project. Does that sound familiar to you?
Yeah, that's, that, I think you hit it there. Thank you.
Yeah. Doesn't say.
Good evening.
Evening.
Dr. Serge Pan, forty-nine Skyline, recently in Lemonster. Um, I'm, for the very first time in this kind of setting, so, uh, please, um, accept my apologies if I am not complying with the, uh, the custom of, uh, this kind of things. So my, um, questions are fairly general. Uh, three hundred and eight units, which probably will lead to, um, uh, one thousand two hundred, one thousand, one thousand, uh, three hundred, uh, residents. With the current, uh, population of Lemonster, forty-three thousand, five hundred people, that is increase of two and a half percent. It's a huge influx. Is Lemonster missing, uh, highly qualified people for, to fill five hundred openings for jobs? Are we really, really in that kind of, uh, need for, uh, that kind of influx of, uh, people for such a huge monstrous development in the residential area that will completely decimate, destroy, uh, the residential area? I looked at the maps before going over here. It's absolutely fully beautiful residential area where people know each other, they go to see each other, to greet each other, and then all of a sudden, this monstrous complex. We lived in Cambridge for twenty-six years, and we ran away just because of this kind of developments, because crime is through the roof. The cars are on the streets all the time, drug dealings, cars are broken in, apartments are broken in. And, uh, you know, it's right in our backyard. Uh, it's, it's beautiful area. We used to have bear in the middle of our backyard, thanks to my neighbor who, uh, videoed it. I have picture of the, uh, yellow cranes right in my backyard. We have pictures of all the indigenous species right there. And yes, uh, several previous speakers said very clearly that the area changed a lot. And I would somehow understand, as you are, as residents and patriots of Lemonster, which I believe many of you lived here for a long time, would consider, well, maybe eight, ten single-family houses. Well, may, okay, maybe couple townhouses, but with owners who care about place where they live. But the multifamily development with purely rental units, it's a recipe for disaster, public safety, break-ins. You could barely have any cruiser being called into the north Lemonster. Now you will have, if that will happen. Cruisers are on duty there all the time. And we don't know what really the target audience for the residents for that development. I understand that, uh, Boston and Cambridge are swallowed by, uh, many people who they want to get out, but is Lemonster the place to get that, especially in such a beautiful area, to decimate the nature? To destroy the, uh, you know, the residential area where people know each other and greet each other with such a monster development? So let's think who the winners and losers in this. There is only one winner, the nationwide corporation that cares about the bottom line, that's it. Losers are the, uh, but neighbors and the next-door neighbors. And the next level loser will be the city, because basically, we are just getting troubles on ourselves. I just looked, uh, this morning in Massachusetts General Law's, uh, Section Forty Wetland Protection Act, which I'm absolutely a hundred percent sure that we live on a wetland, and the building that is proposed will be on the wetland, right on top of it, right on top of the creek. And I don't want to take your, uh, attention too much by, uh, reading, uh, all the excerpts that I presented for this, but it says, "Any person filing a notice of intention with the Conservation Commission shall at this time..." And I don't want to take your attention too much by reading all the excerpts that I presented for this, but it says, "Any person filing a notice of intention with the Conservation Commission shall at this time, at the time, give written notification thereof."
Excuse me.
"By delivery in hand or certified mail."
Excuse me. That's for the Conservation Commission, okay? I appreciate your inputs, okay? And we've all said that we are concerned about the wetlands. This committee is concerned about the wetlands and we agree with you, okay? The actual law is, is under the purview of the Conservation Commission and I really don't want to, you know, get into their area, okay? But some of the things that you said is, at the time that this was proposed, a lot of things are happening or weren't happening. Twenty-five years ago, Leominster was not what it is today. Twenty-five years ago, we were looking for development, we were looking for housing, we were looking for a lot of things. So when this development and we had, remember, we had just recently been turned down and the land was determined to be primarily useless, is how can we make some of this land available? Or how can we make it so it becomes a vital part of the city? Or that the city can work it in so that we can have some kind of, you know, value so that we can tax that value so that we can have some input? When the studies were done, and I was part of the studies and I'll admit to it, okay? We looked at the, you might say, the deepest pockets were, were commercial at about $3.25 a square foot. We were looking at, at the value for some, the value for industrial, they were looking at around a dollar twenty-five a square foot. So industrial wasn't going to work unless we had some kind of vehicle to make it feasible for private development to build that property. We also looked at housing and there was not enough property there left to make this and we did not want, and our rules pretty much say that we can't tie housing or single-family homes into industrial. It's not a mix. Good planning never allows it, okay? So single-family homes are out and if you look at it, doesn't wash, they have more of an impact on your school systems than something like this does. So a conscious decision was made that we go with the multifamily. At that time, we did not, I'll be honest with you, I didn't know what multifamily would, what would transpire in the future, but we knew economically to make this land viable and become part of the city, a multifamily structure was going to be part of the, part of the solution. So that's what was the, I'm trying to be honest with you, it was made as a conscious decision up by, by a lot of people. And also, like I said earlier, the University of Massachusetts was heavily involved in this design of this facility. So, or this area of the facility, I'm wrong. So I'm just trying to give you, you know, yes, things change in 25 years. Situation is that we have to abide by what was written down and the ordinances that we're given to. So I appreciate your inputs and yeah, we're going to put a heavy look at the, at conservation. But as far as the structures of the facility, that was pretty much, that's taken care of by our ordinances.
Just for direct, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. But for the record, my major concern was public safety.
No, I think.
Because we have experience and that was brutal. And that's why we ran out of Cambridge to find the, you know, the sanctity of living here in Leominster and now it's being destroyed.
I, I agree. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to have a Cambridge here either.
Can I ask one question to developers?
Sure.
Will there be any, in your planning, any wall or high fence separating the development from the abutting areas to prevent the trespassing?
There's, there's no fence shown on the plan at this point in time, no.
There you go, trespassings.
No, no, no. It's the issue.
Oh, by the way, one more question if I may. There will be quite a few teenagers in that development and we do not see any, anything in that plan that will keep them busy inside the development, which means that they will go all around the area trespassing and making havoc.
I don't know, that's an assumption?
Yes, it is an assumption.
Okay.
From experience.
My guess is they're going to go more towards more. Okay, but, but I can't argue that and I'm not going to argue that point, okay? I, I just don't know.
Well, I.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's getting late. Is there anyone else that has anything new?
My name is Mary Ann Russell, 265 Harvard Street, and my house has been broken into five times so far. So we respectfully request deny the current development proposal of apartments to be built because of security, conduct a comprehensive environmental impact study, preserve the wetlands and forest area as protection, excuse me, protected green space, consider alternative development sites that do not threaten sensitive ecosystems. And the last is engage, please, the community in meaningful dialogue about sustainable development options. What about townhouses? Right now, I walk my dog on Harvard Street and I have to hop onto people's lawns because people don't move over four feet and they're speeding. That's what we have right now. So 616 more cars will not accommodate Harvard Street. The safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Kristin Jalinas Howell at 33 Skyline. I would like to say many other abutters have spoken and I am disappointed that we weren't contacted directly and had to hear about this via social media, things like that. So I don't know if we can change that in the future, but the Sentinel Enterprises is not selling a lot of copies these days, I'm just gonna say.
Yeah, I know.
So at the beginning of the meeting, someone brought up density, I believe those were the words used. What are the current rules in the city? Did we change them to accommodate this? Should we look at changing them before we approve this?
No, thanks.
I had Serge's numbers.
Okay.
It's a lot of people going into a really little spot.
Okay. Let me try to, I'll try to give you an idea of what the density is and what's been happening. And I also admit that we've been getting a lot of push from the state for certain things. Our older densities in the city, primarily Ward, Ward Seven, okay, or as people say, French Hill, the area off of Mechanic Street, is around eight, eight units per acre, okay? Through the MBTA, which was, we required, that pushed most of our stuff to 14 units per acre, which things, they required. We did a study in the city. Our densest area we have is off of Green Street, those buildings up off near Doyle Field, and I think those are 27 units per acre. We recently had a consortium in the city. There were developers involved, there were a lot of people from the city, different parts of the city, councilors, planning board, conserva, you know, a lot of cross-section of the city, mayor's office. And we worked up a new ordinances and at that point, they went to 2,000 square feet, okay, per unit, which rounds out to someplace around 22 units, okay? Give or take a few per acre. This development actually comes in under that around 2,500 square feet, something in that area. So it's under the, what was proposed at 22, so we're probably at 21 or something like that.
Okay.
So as far as your density is concerned, that's a little bit of a history, but that's where we are on the density, so. And some of it, we had to bring it up. And, and we've been, some of that's been by the state. A lot of you realize it's even worse than that because, you know, everybody in here has a single-family home, can now put an addition on it, okay, by right, and have, and put another apartment on it. So that's even, you know, in your neighborhoods. And that was done by the state, we had no choice.
Okay. And I'm sure I speak for all the abutters, would love to work with you to come up with a better plan than no plan because it doesn't sound like, other than the natural buffer zone that's there, that there's any plan. Thank you.
Elizabeth, can you please define or tell people the difference between special permit and site plan and what we have to do to identify people?
Well, with the site plan, for notification, that's it, you don't, okay. For a site plan, no notification to abutters is required. We do, which it's a laborious act to be doing, checking the agenda that we post every, twice a month or once a month when we have meetings. There is, it's just in our ordinance, it's written that way. There is no requirement for a butter, for a butter notifications. With a special permit, we do have a butter, a requirement for a butter notifications. We do mailings within a certain amount of feet from the site and you would get something in the mail notifying you of the project. And then after the decision is made, then you would get a second notification with the decision. But for a site plan, all the rules have been followed, no notification has been required of the planning board or the staff.
And, and that's by state statute?
And what if you don't like it?
I will make one comment, though. Usually with projects this size, the developer will have a community meeting. So if that didn't happen, they'll have a, they'll have a community meeting in advance. I, I, if you, if you have something to say, please come up. I really don't appreciate people strouting from the audience because.
Yeah, I'll come back after.
Okay. But that, that's usually what I've noticed in my 30 years on the planning board is that people, they'll, they'll have a meeting somewhere.
Right. And who would have all greatly appreciated a meeting? That would have been great. I saw something in, I'm not sure if it was in Leominster ordinances, but a meeting is required for anything over 20 acres.
No, see.
They're 18, they're just too short.
Yeah, that rule, the rule is that if it's over 20 acres, okay, then it has to go to the city council.
Okay.
Okay?
So two acres short.
And they have to be involved. So yeah, they're under the 20 acres, so it doesn't have to go to the city council.
Yep. Just want to click.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, I move to close the hearing.
Okay.
Is that what we want to do? I don't feel comfortable voting, office.
Okay.
We haven't even.
Do we want to close the hearing?
No, if we close the hearing, we're voting.
You're right. So maybe we want to wait for conservation?
Do we want to wait for?
Yes.
We, we got to wait, you want to wait for, you know, information from.
Wait until conservation.
Conservation and what they, what they come back.
Never mind some of the things we identified that weren't addressed.
And hopefully the, hopefully the trash and the parking and the other things.
Yeah, and they can get the other things put away.
So I move to continue. Until when?
August 18th at 6:30.
Is that enough time to get to conservation?
I think conservation is right around then.
When, when is conservation scheduled?
Are you guys scheduled for conservation yet?
No, as we stated earlier, the application for conservation will be going in this week.
So there's no schedule.
Go ahead, sir.
Keith LeBlanc, 36, how will that be communicated to people, the conservation?
Oh, the conservation?
Yeah.
I think they have to notify you.
I don't know.
You'll, you'll receive a notification, but certain, certain qualified abutters will get.
Okay.
A notification.
And since, could I ask one more question?
Sure.
All right, so the traffic study was done in February, right?
We, we did our data collection in February.
In February. I would think you would want to do a traffic study at the worst time of the year, right? You had mentioned living in a particular area. You live on Prospect Street. You know what that area is like, November, December, and January. So it's a whole different situation. February, everything drops off, it's a completely different situation, so you know what that's like.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, okay?
Yeah.
I don't know if I have the authority or, I've got to look at that and see if we can define when the traffic study is done. I've never done it.
I'm just saying, February is, is a very conservative time to look at traffic.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
I.
I don't know if I can.
The ordinance does allow the planning board to request additional studies.
Does it? Okay, we've never had.
Wait.
Additional studies, additional studies, but he's talking for a traffic study at a, at a different time. We've already had the traffic study and completed.
Respectfully, I'm just saying, but it's a demonstrably different time of the year.
I, but I.
I don't know.
But my question is, how was this done in February? We didn't, we didn't get the peer review until like nay. So how was it done in February?
Our, our traffic counts were conducted in February. That was, at the end of February is the 26th, I believe, but that's.
But that's your step. What about the, we had the peer review done.
They didn't do it, they just went over the data.
Right. We did, we did collect supplemental data on a Saturday as requested by your consultant and that was done in the summertime. But the counts that were done, the AMP, were done in February. And just to be clear, the, the state standard is not peak month conditions, the state standard is defined by MASTDOT and also the environmental agencies are, is, is average month condition, which is what we did. So there is no criteria at the state level that makes you look at the, the worst month of the year. It's just not the state standard.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's 100% correct. The traffic counts, we do traffic counts any month of the year and we, those traffic counts are adjusted to what's known as average month conditions. That's what the applicant has done. We're not always able to conduct traffic counts during the peak month as they're talking about, but I also want to be very clear as well, you would never build the roadway infrastructure to support peak season traffic counts. It's never done. When we do traffic studies on Cape Cod or the islands, we do not design for summer conditions. It's never done because the rest of the year, you don't use the capacity. All of this, all of the things that you heard tonight about drainage issues, if we built out this roadway or the developer built out the roadway to accommodate the lanes of traffic that are required to accommodate Christmas season at this shopping center would create so much havoc as it relates to impervious area, the wetlands, the wildlife habitat, all of the things you heard, that's why we don't design for that. We manage that traffic, okay? So we make sure that the, the roads themselves don't create, you know, gridlock beyond things that we can't control as it relates to traffic signal timing, things like that, but we would never build for it. That, that's why there is no standard anywhere in any state that requires that you design for peak conditions. The applicant's traffic study was done correctly, traffic counts were done and adjusted correctly and we reviewed all of that. It meets all state standards as well as accepted engineering practices.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks, you've answered my question. Thank you.
So.
So I'm, I'm just saying that 20-second delay is not applicable for a quarter of the year.
It doesn't, I'm sorry.
Can we, can we? Can we move on?
We're moving on, I'm not taking any more.
So the motion is to, to continue.
I'm into my motions now. I'm into my part of the meeting.
To continue the meeting until September?
September 15th.
September 15th, 6:30?
We have 6:30 available.
No, we, our, our request is for the August meeting.
August 18th is the August meeting.
Yes.
You, you plan to go to conservation before August 18th?
We, we don't believe that it's required to go to conservation.
Well, we, we want to hear from conservation before we vote on it, so we're going to say September.
So we're going to say September.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Spencer Holland with Myrick Law Firm, representing the developer here. Again, just to kind of quickly circle back to the context in which we're here tonight. For a site plan review, the planning board does not have the authority to withhold its approval of the project pending a decision by another municipal board, such as the Conservation Commission, and exercising its authority over the project. So there are some legitimate questions within the planning board's jurisdiction for site plan approval, such as, you know, garbage, such as traffic. But when it comes to wetlands, when it comes to Conservation Commission issues, that's not a permissible reason to withhold site plan approval.
Please, everyone has an opportunity to speak. I'm really not happy with, that everyone can come to the podium and say something, but I don't want any outbursts from the audience, please.
He said he was done.
Yeah, he said he was done.
Then come up to the podium, please.
Sorry, just one last thing. I understand he's a lawyer, I can't, I can't speak on the law, but how can you properly approve a site plan if the site isn't properly evaluated? The wetlands are, part of the property is on the boundary. The commission properly does those wetland and the wetland delineations.
Okay, you answer the question, I'll answer it, okay? We, we take and we, we approve, we, we could, if we approve it, and we approve it with the condition of approval of the Conservation Commission. So in essence, we approve our piece of the, of that. They don't look at our part. And then they, once they make their approval, then the whole thing is approved. If they turned it down, then it's not approved. So that's, that's how it's done. The, the planning board can in fact approve it, okay, but with the condition that the Conservation Commission, or they have to, they have to approve it also. It takes both boards. But also, we have, like you said, you said, there are other things outside of wetlands.
Yes.
Snow storage, sanitary conditions, you know, dump stations.
I'd also like to hear from our attorney.
I know, I'd like to hear from our counsel.
Yeah, no, everything you've just said is correct. The site plan can be approved with the conditions that it's approved by Conservation, especially because there are things in the site plan criteria that may be relevant to things that the Conservation Commission will take up, like drainage and some of the other things we heard about.
But are we within our rights to continue the hearing until September?
Yes, you are in your rights to...
Yes, but there's the other items.
We would need a 90-day action extension from the applicant because it was originally June 29th, and it was extended to July 29th. So we would have to extend that.
Yeah, every, so every local bylaw is different, and I don't know, this is all governed by local bylaws. There's no state statute as to site plan, as you mentioned earlier.
Right.
I'm not sure if your local bylaw sets a certain timeframe. And if you didn't issue a decision by that time, you would need an agreement from the applicant.
That's correct. So where are we on the 90 days?
July 29th is when it ends.
Okay.
So I, I move to continue the hearing until September 6:30?
Again, if I may, again, just because I have the bylaws in front of me here.
It's an ordinance, not a bylaw.
The ordinance, thank you. It's section 60.2.3. The period of review for a site plan approval is as follows. Then it goes down within 90 days of the informational meeting. The planning board shall act on the application.
Right.
My understanding, although I don't have the critical dates in front of me, is that that 90-day period expires at the end of this month.
Originally June 29th, but it was extended to July 29th.
Right.
We have mitigations, okay? We have, and the planning board requests an extension on approval to August? Or September?
Yeah, again, our, our request is to be on the August meeting. We feel like we've got sufficient time to address the, the planning board issues related to snow storage, trash.
So you're, they are requesting August meeting. That, that gives us the, over the 90 days. So, so a motion, a motion is in order to continue this, this hearing to August 18th?
With the applicant's agreement, I would add to your motion.
It was his request.
Yes.
With the applicant's agreement, to August 18th at...
6:30.
6:30. I have a motion made and seconded to continue this hearing to August 18th at 6:30. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing on a call for the roll call.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
Caravatoreso.
Yes.
Tom Kergnen. Jason Parre. Dean Valier.
Dean Valier, yes.
Thank you, Dean. John Souza.
Yes. Thank you much, folks. I think you've got a lot of input, and I appreciate you coming here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you to the board. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, guys.
All right, what's, we got, are you still going?
We still have Lake Hurst Street.
And, and don't we have a parking lot, something changing or something?
Because we had no choice. We pushed this one off. Yeah, that's right, then the race train came in and we had a...
We have more agenda items, right? We're not done?
No. We give a few minutes to clear. I think that's, that's got to be shorter. They just haven't changed the density. Yeah, sure. Just a signing. That's Pleasant Street. It's not Main Street.
What's next, Mr. Chair?
Okay.
Make a motion to move to 6 dot 1, Communications.
I have a motion made and seconded to move to 6 dot 1, Communications. Any discussion? Hearing on a call for the vote, roll call.
Patrick Perla, excused. Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi. Caravatoreso.
Yes.
Tom Kergnen.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Dean Valier, yes.
Okay, yes.
So the Form E covenant's approved and the Mylar would be signed?
Mike, please.
Peter Camp of Assau on behalf of the applicant. The request tonight was for the Mylar to be signed and for the Form E covenant to be approved. So both will be approved.
Okay.
And the Mylar signed.
So we sign that now, do we...
We also have a homeowners' association. I didn't know if you wanted to send that out for legal review.
What's that?
We also have a homeowners' association document. I didn't know if you wanted to send that out to KP Law for review before we...
No, the, the homeowners' association is, is just for informational purposes. One of the conditions in the approval was...
No, Basset Street, no.
Yeah, Basset Street, the intent is for that to go to the city. The homeowners' association is strictly for convenience.
Right.
The easement that needed, the easement language for the right-of-way in the sidewalk was reviewed by the DPW. That's the condition in the approval. So we're just asking for the Form E covenant to be approved and for the Mylar to be signed.
I think, yeah, we approved the covenant, we signed the Mylars, okay, vice versa, okay? And then we'll make a condition that the homeowners' association be in place prior to release of any of the Mylar, of release of the covenant.
Perfect, because I've already worked those forms with KP Law and three other developments.
As long as that's taken care of before we release any of the covenants.
Okay, that's fair.
Okay, fair enough?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Okay, if you're going to sign the Mylar, do you want to do that now or do you want to wait till the end of the meeting? I can pass it along.
We can, let's multi-staff.
Let's continue while we...
Yeah, we'll pass the Mylar around and sign it, and we'll go back into the hearing. Okay. Just folks, let's know this is a, we have to sign a Mylar for, for a project going on, so paperwork has to be taken care of, too.
It's open 6:40, I have 6:40.
Okay, we have 6:40. Continued public meeting for site plan for 435 and 481 Lancaster Street, map 443, Passau 1, 2, 2B, and map 356, Passau, mixed-use, multifamily development. I'll also open at the same time, 641, continued open public meeting for a special permit, 435, 481 Lancaster Street, map 448, Passau 1, 2, 2B, and map 356, Passau 17, mixed-use, multifamily development. Both hearings are now open. Okay, you're on.
Thank you. Good evening. For the, for the record, Bill Hanigan with Hanigan Engineering. While you're signing that Mylar, we're having some visuals passed out to help take a look at the site from different perspectives. We also have a YouTube video on the back screen, which, once you're ready, we'll launch that so that you can see kind of an overview. It's an animated overview of what we feel the product will be looking like once we're complete, so if we could take a look at that. There are some edits that didn't quite make it to this video. And we'll get into those edits as we present the site plans.
Ready for YouTube? Just get the pen cap.
Okay, you're going to get started? Okay, you're going to get started? You're on a control. Oh, there you go.
Yeah, so what we added to the beginning of it was basically the site in existing conditions from aerial photographs. Or, and you'll, you'll go through two or three different views of the site. And then from there, the video will bring you through views of each of the buildings and the work that's going to be done around the site, so you can get a better feel of that.
Here's Lancaster Street.
There's usually nice music playing in the background, but... Do you want me to sing?
Yeah, we'll get an extra one later.
That wasn't, that wasn't part of the presentation.
Okay.
So a couple things on that presentation to note. One of them was that Building 1 was shown on the presentation as 110 units. It's actually 102 units. There's actually only 102 units in that building, um, just to clarify that, so that we're all consistent. Um, and there, there's a driveway, um, connection that is to Mr. Fry's building that is on the current plans, which we've since worked out, a revision of that driveway, which happened on Thursday of last week. So we're gonna, we're gonna share some of that information today. So on the screen behind you now is the site plan, um, that's most recently been submitted. Um, it shows the, the various buildings. The, the idea of the presentation was to give you a, a look and feel of, of what the buildings would look like in three-dimensional form, um, to be able to kind of see how the site would be developed, um, inclusive of some of the landscaping that we'd be adding as part of the project. One thing I can't guarantee is I can't guarantee that the windows are gonna be as shiny and reflective as they were in the presentation. So, um, from that perspective, I, I think that, um, it gives you a good idea of what, of what we've done. So a lot of the site changes that we've been making, um, I should say the majority of the site changes on the western half of the site really have, have not, there's not really been too much, um, as far as changes goes. Uh, we've made some additional, um, I gotta get the, uh... In the area of, um, the, the rear of the existing 435 building, there's an existing, an area of parking that was taken out, which would be used for, for loading, and there's been some signs, um, that would, that would be added in that area that says, "No parking Monday through Friday between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM." So after hours of those hours, and then that's really for loading and unloading into the restaurant site and into the building site itself for, for moving, et cetera. So, um, after hours, that would be available for, for overflow parking, either from, uh, visitors or from, uh, from the restaurant site itself. So that's one, one update that was made. The other update that was made is, um, in the area of, uh, Mr. Fry's building, uh, we had, uh, shown a, a driveway, um, connection. Um, so we have the main driveway coming in, into the site, which would then loop around into the back of, of Building 3, uh, between Mr. Fry's building and, um, and Building 3. Um, the, the concern that Mr. Fry had was that this location would be, you know, quite frankly, halfway up the hill towards, um, the, uh, the site before you'd actually find out where his building was. So what we, we were able to work out was a new configuration, uh, which this is still mock draft because of the fact that it has not been submitted. Uh, but we have it, we have an exhibit sketch, um, available. And what this would do is, as we come onto the site, there'd be a sign placed in this area. There would be a sign up, up here as well, denoting, um, the businesses in, in the site as well. And then there would be a sign in this location here to divert traffic, um, that would be going to Mr. Fry's, um, site up this driveway around the parking areas that are, that are in, in this area here. So he would have his own dedicated entrance, um, to his building. This worked out rather well, uh, with the grading on the site, incorporating a portion of Mr. Fry's land into the grading, um, which helped out both parties, and I think it was a, uh, an effort that, um, was well, was well undertaken by, by, um, by both parties on that. What that also did was, um, going back to some numbers on, on the site, um, originally, the product had 292 units. Um, with the, uh, changing of some of the uses within the 435 building, a, a lot of the use in that area was going to be rented space. That's now more, um, site amenities for the project, um, of potential, um, I guess maybe you can get into that a little bit as far as what they are in that area.
Rafael Hernandez was on.
And what does that bring to density?
Okay, so, so, um, just for one, one second, um, we just wanna, I just wanna touch on the amenities that are in the 435 building, which Rafael has a better understanding of than I do.
So if you go to the last few pages of the presentation, you have under-enclosed garage space with electric charging stations. A leasing office will be located in the premises. Uh, there'll be a swimming pool and a dog run and a business center. The, possibly a golf simulator, an indoor recreational areas, event room, only for the tenants of the building, not for the public. Community rooms, dog wash, a fitness center, and, um, and some other, uh, outdoor and shared spaces for the use of the tenants and their guests.
And those uses would be throughout the entire site. The uses within the 435 building, which was, was gonna be some office space and some other, uh, uh, a gym, a, a center that would be open to the public, those have been transitioned into being solely for the use of the tenants, um, including those, some of those amenities that were just mentioned. So by doing that, we basically freed up a lot of the parking that was, was, um...
None of the offices in 435 are staying?
I'm sorry?
None of the offices in 435 are staying?
Um, I believe there are some offices staying on, on there, but not as many.
Okay.
So, so I'm not confused, 'cause I, I'm a very simple guy, I get confused easy. The garage spaces under the buildings, those are in addition to the strip spots and the lots.
Yes.
So, what do we got for a total?
Okay, so let me go back to that number. So let me, let's go back.
Was that me?
Was it me?
Yes.
That was us.
So...
I was gonna say, excuse me.
We started at, uh, 292. We're, we're now down to 276.
For parking spaces?
Nope, 276 units.
Units, 276 units, so this is wrong, the 284, right? That it says on the presentation, it says 284.
I apologize for that, we...
No, it's okay, I'm just saying, I just want the numbers.
Right.
This is still fluid.
No, 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 I think that, that, that's actually in the, in the, in the planner's numbers.
Okay.
So there's 292 was originally proposed.
Yep.
We dropped, um, down to 276 by removing some of the units in the...
435.
In the 435 building.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, those are the real numbers, okay? Then from there, we have, for the non-residential parking requirement for the, the property, we need 35 spaces for the restaurant and the other uses within the building.
Yep.
We have 459 parking spaces total. We need 449 by the calculations. So between the number of units that we would have, plus the non-residential uses, we would need 449. We have 10 extra right now.
So back to the 435 building, if there are offices still remaining, how does that factor into the parking count?
Those are included in the 35 spaces of non-residential, yes.
Yep.
Okay? So at that point in time, we, we actually have 10 extra spaces, and that doesn't include the spaces that were blocked off for the, um, the loading areas, uh, on the site. So that, you know, that, that parking is available off-hours after between 8:00 and 5:00.
Are you gonna control that? Just curious.
Management.
Just real quick, Chair, do we need a, do we need a, matter of housekeeping, do we need a motion to hear business after 10 o'clock?
What's that?
Do we need a motion to hear business after 10 o'clock?
No.
That's not a thing?
We've been here to 1:00 before.
No, there's no condition on that.
So, I'm sorry, so Bill, again, what were we just talking about?
Right, so the, the parking is 459.
Oh, how are we gonna manage it?
We have 10 extra, and then the parking, uh, that doesn't include any spaces with, within that area that would be available, okay? That's all management, onsite management has to deal with that stuff.
How many extra spaces there? Just curious. 10 more, or? The ones that are stripped off, looks like.
It's probably, um, it's at least 10, maybe even 12 spaces. Because if you look at this, if you look just below that, there's five spaces across the street. I'll zoom in a little more. There's, there's 10 right here, and that's about the same distance to about here, so you might even be more, like 10 or 15 in that area.
If you go to page 3 and look at Building 4 on the left side, you can see the spaces between the dumpster and the bump out of the brick building.
Right, so, but those aren't, those aren't included in our parking count, so that's, that's just, that's just, it's, it's extra space if needed, you know, for whatever purpose it may be.
That's managed parking if you need it.
Right. So, so now, what we'd like to show you is, is part of doing this reconfiguration that's on the screen right now for access to Mr. Fry's building, we actually ended up picking up an additional two parking spaces for that. So now we have two extra spaces above and beyond what we had said before, for a total of 12 spaces above what's required by the code.
So you have 461.
461, now is what we have right now. Correct. Okay? So the other things that have been done on the project include, um, a landscape plan, which we have, um, shown here. Um, this plan, um, not sure exactly why it took so long to get to us, but it's based upon a previous version of the, of the site. Um, so this would need to be updated, but in essence, it's prepared by a landscaped architect. So when, what we would do is we would request that as part of the conditions of approval, that the landscape plan be finalized and included into the construction set prior to construction. We would also request that same, um, condition relative to the reconfiguration of the drive aisle to Mr. Fry's property, um, as part of a condition of approval for that to be added to the site plan set prior to construction. Okay, that would be the two things that we'd be asking for. As far as the off-site mitigation, um, there's also an updated, um, concept plan relative to traffic. Um, and I'll let Heather come up and talk more about that from GPR. That's on, that's on the screen now behind you.
Hello, for the record, I'm Heather Monocup with Greeman Peterson, and we are the traffic engineers for the proposed project. This concept plan that's before you is, um, identical to what was presented at the last meeting, except we updated the driveway to, to match the changes on the new site plan. So on July 2nd, we, um, final, we updated this plan with, with an official response to comments of all the comments that we had discussed at the previous meeting that VAI brought up, and that was just officially submitted on July 2nd. So there's no, no changes. We're still proposing, um, the new traffic signal with the, with the turn lane. We're gonna get rid of the mid-block crossing. We're gonna put a new crossing at, um, Elm Hill Ave. We're gonna put the "Do Not Block The Box" at, um, oh my gosh, the name escapes me at this hour. Howard Street, yes. Um, and that's all shown on the plan in front of you. So we just, we just wanted to make sure, 'cause the driveway, the alignment of the driveway just shifted ever so slightly. So that was submitted, um, to the city, and I believe it was sent over to VAI. We still understand that we have construction documents to do for all these off-site improvements. I believe VAI, along with the city, will review those documents once they're done. Uh, we haven't started them yet, 'cause we don't have approval on the project. Um, the only thing that I think is questionable right now, outstanding for traffic, is the crosswalk location at the Elm Hill intersection. The police department brought it up. They wanna see it on the east side of Elm Hill. We're proposing it on the west side of Elm Hill. There's pros and cons to both sides. Um, I, I don't know if Jeff has any opinions, but I'll, I'll say what, what, what we think right now. Um, we've proposed it on the west side, one, because the heavy movement is the left turn onto Elm and the right turn off of Elm. Uh, also, the area, if you can zoom in, uh, Bill, there at the top left corner, that driveway is proposed by a different development. We can build the ramps as shown on the plan here today, where the police department wants the, um, the crosswalk on the east side. That curbing is not there. It's a, it's a parking lot to a, to a vegan restaurant right now. So there's just much more infrastructure that would have to be built to get that crosswalk there, and it just, I guess we just didn't think it made sense with that redevelopment. Um, I know the police department, in their comments, said that we should coordinate with the, um, with that developer. I'm, I'm sure that we can do that, but, um, like I said, we haven't changed the location of that. I, I didn't know if that would be up for discussion with the planning board or, or thoughts on that. Um, either way, it, you know, it can go on either side. Uh, the police department is saying it should be on the east side, because that's where the, they think people are gonna cross, like where the mid-block crossing is today, and so it makes sense to, instead of having to cross Elm Hill, they can just cross over Lancaster Street and be on their way. But again, there's, there's pluses and minuses to both sides. I don't know if one side is, is better than the other. Um, but I, I think we're amenable to, to whatever has to happen there. It just, the infrastructure on the other side of the road is not there. So can we, can we put the crosswalk in after that other property gets developed? Maybe that's something that we can do. Um, that's, that's really the only outstanding issue.
Right, so we also were involved with the, with the approval process for that, um, site across the street. Um, I don't know what the schedule of that construction is versus the schedule of the construction on, on the site. So I think if the, if the police department, um, would rather have it on the east side of that intersection, we can accommodate that, but we'd have to wait till the construction was underway on the, um, the shopping center at the old Lucas Restaurant, um, site. So, um, and I'm not sure if Jeff has a comment on that either way.
Sorry, Jeff.
Shopping center in that lot, huh?
It's like three buildings, uh, three, three units, I think.
So, good, um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, again, for the record, Jeffrey Derrick with Van Hessen Associates. So I think as we looked at it, and the plan that you see here, um, tonight, was kind of our thought as to where the crosswalk would be located. And, and the reason is, I think, as you heard Heather, the, the applicant's consultant mention. I mean, our thought in looking at it, we were considering the heavy turning movements, and so as you're thinking about it, as a motorist on Elm, Elm Hill, coming up to the intersection there, you've got a heavy volume of traffic that you're trying to traverse that intersection. Most of the traffic is turning right. So as you're turning right, you're looking to the left. And so if there's a pedestrian in a crosswalk on the east side of the intersection that starts to cross, they think you're gonna be looking for them, but you, as a motorist, unfortunately, we're always focused more on the traffic rather than the pedestrians. We're looking left. We start to make our turn, when there's a gap, there could be a pedestrian there. That's not the condition you have with the crosswalk as shown here. If you're making that left-hand turn, you're actually gonna come out, and you actually have some distance before you cross the crosswalk. So if you see a pedestrian, you've got some time to react. So that was our rationale and reasoning to put it on the other side. The other thing, as was mentioned, there is infrastructure, so you could actually build that crosswalk, um, today, um, in that location. So that's why we had, um, recommended, or suggested that that's where the crossing should go, and that's kind of the rationale behind that. Uh, but the police department may have another reason, but that's kind of our safety and engineering perspective in looking at putting the crossing where it is. Um, I would just, I think while I'm up here, I'll just mention very quickly, as it relates to the signalized intersection. One of the things that is outstanding, and this can be addressed in the, uh, final design, and this is gonna be consistent with what you heard to me or heard from me previously, um, is just to check to make sure the fire truck, in this case, it's a signalized intersection. So if you are at the stop line exiting the development, you have to sit there. The light would be green for the tri, fire traffic if it's approaching on Viscloide or on Lancaster Street to clear the traffic in front of it. But if you're coming out of the site, you're not supposed to move. You stay there with a red light. The fire truck has to be able to make a right turn. It can't cross that stop line. So one of the things we've asked is that, as they go through the final design, is to make sure that that corner radius of the right-hand turn, the fire truck can make that move and stay within the correct side of the road. It can't cross the center line, 'cause in this case, it's under stop control. That vehicle can't leave. It's got a red light. Uh, so we did, as a part of final design, we just wanted that checked, so. I will sit down and be here to answer the questions you might have.
So to summarize, um, I think from, from the perspective of, of the, of the crosswalk, from an engineering perspective and a safety perspective, it seems to me like the locate, the location of the crosswalk shown in the plan right now on the screen on the eastern side of, of Elm Hill Ave seems to be a safer location. And maybe the plane, the police department didn't look at that particular aspect. It might be more convenient on the west side of that intersection, but I think we really have to err on the side of caution with safety on, and put it on the, on the, on the west, on the west side of the... Is that right, west?
Yeah, it's, it's west.
Yeah, the midwalk is being removed.
He's saying two, the streets have to cross two streets.
Okay. Where am I getting my question from? There's gonna be a crosswalk at Elm Hill Avenue, and then a crosswalk at the signalizing intersection. The one that's in the middle right now, which was basically built for people going from Gateway to Pizano's, that's gonna be removed, because it doesn't, it's not really a safe location for any... We have to. We, you should have one at the signalizing intersection. That makes sense. Yeah.
I think the crosswalk's the thing, you know, what I wanna get to is that density. Okay, we had talked about density way before.
Yep.
What is your density now?
Um, I didn't do any density calc, because density calcs are not required.
The requirement, Bill, what we've had in this city is, and we just... The requirement, Bill, what we've had in this city is, and we just required, and we had a whole thing, is twenty units per acre. Okay, two thousand square feet.
Two thousand square feet per unit.
Okay, per unit. And it comes up to someplace around twenty-two for the city. Now, I realize that Business B was changed, but it also says in a special permit, consistent with the neighborhood. Okay? And that's what I'm trying to get to, is we're not consistent, as I look at this, we're not consistent with the neighborhood. Even though the, there is no, and I know that it's an oversight, it was never meant to have large developments in the Business B area, so it was overlooked. But it did say consistent with the neighborhood, and the last time, when I did a calculation, you're at thirty-seven versus twenty or twenty-two. And that's my problem. Well, okay, we just had a two-hour discussion, okay, and they're at twenty-five hundred square feet per unit. Okay, so they're not even at the two thousand. Okay, the MBTA, which we complained about, is three thousand. Or three, okay, so it's even higher, they only, they come in at fourteen units per acre. You want me to prove something that we've never built in the city of this height? We've never even come close. The highest we have is on Green Street, and I said this before, is twenty-seven. Okay? And that's my problem. We can have all the talking we want about the traffic, but we're looking at a density that's almost twice what we've allowed or even allowed before. It was only a couple of years ago, we were at five thousand square foot. Okay? So we've dropped, we've gone to half of that, and we've jumped it up, but that's where I have a problem. Okay, we discussed it last time, and I said, "No change here."
Well, maybe I can address that, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
So, this is, you know, obviously, as Mr. Hannigan's indicated, it's compliant with your zoning ordinance, and unfortunately, your board in part has to at least look at that as a starting point.
That's correct.
As you saw the, like, the schematics, this is a unique proposed development. I mean, you are taking down, you're raising buildings, being proposed or raised, that are frankly, been there for a long time, they're heavy, industrial, you're looking at a neighborhood where there is a lot of protection buffer-wise. The type of rental people you're gonna see are young professionals driving in from Boston, it's a different living arrangement, and I think has been demonstrated in the application. It is a safe, aesthetically pleasing proposal. And I respect the chair's points in saying, "This is unique, this has not been done in this area before." There may have been some other housing in Lummester that you have the type of density that's being proposed here, but again, it's something that respectfully has been considered by the legislative body in this community, it's allowed, it's shown to be attractive, and you're looking at rather high-rise apartments that look very attractive for young professionals coming in. There's gonna be other amenities associated with it. Not every single living community looks identical or the same. So density is an item that should be considered, but frankly, not the only one.
So I'm not saying it's the only one, but I'm saying is if we're a little bit over, I mean, we're taking a huge jump. Okay, yes, guaranteed, in all the planning that we did, and a lot of, most of it in the city, we always looked at the Business B as a transitional zone. Okay, it was basically, hey, we will look at, you know, want it between residential and maybe have some offices, and that was the general idea, that it was gonna be offices, maybe an apartment, but it really wasn't looked at. So, yes, we made a mistake, that we didn't put a density in Business B. And I'll admit that we made a mistake, and it should be there. So, but when I look at the rest of the city, and I'm sort of sticking up to the city council and the rest of the people, is we had a long-range, I don't know how many meetings we had this summer, last summer, you know, on housing. And at that point, we agreed that we would increase it, and they went to twenty-five hundred on it. Okay?
Understood.
Square feet, as a maximum. And I'm taking that that's an input, and that's from the city council, it's twenty-five hundred after a study for the city. I'm not making, okay, now that's a huge jump from where we were, and that's even more than what the MBTA requires. So, yeah, I can give a little bit, but when I'm at, I don't know, the actual number, I did a quick calculation earlier, we're around thirty-seven.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think the difference between this development and the one you saw prior to this one, is that this is taking a relatively blighted area, an old industrial area that was used and then not used, and those buildings are torn down, that converted from that to some office and some warehouse slash construction uses, restaurant use, mixed use type of thing, to now where the point where, you know, with the transition between the ability to occupy office space, not only in Lummester, but in Worcester County, in the state, and the nation itself, office spaces, you wouldn't, you don't see people building offices anymore because of that reason. So, part of this is the expense and the cost that goes along with taking down the old buildings that are on the site, and that's not an easy expense to deal with. Part of it is being able to provide facilities that are much, much more modern than what has been typically built in this area. These types of podium-style construction buildings have not been built in the Lummester area. Okay? This is a new type of construction. We do this, we do do this a lot in other communities, Worcester, Westboro, even Shrewsbury, we're doing something like that. The idea is that to take a piece of land and to develop more than enough, more than that fifteen or twenty acres, twenty units per acre, is actually a benefit to the city because of the fact that what it does is it takes one development, one site, and is able to put a lot of units on that site to get its numbers up to where they need to be according to state and even your own study that said you needed more housing. It's taking one site that is an older site, that is, it needs to be rebuilt, what do you build with it? So, in my opinion, I think that this might take the pressure off the city for it doing, for doing a site that's in an RB or an RC that is capped out at eight units per acre or eight, or ten units an acre, if that's the new number, whatever the new number is. This provides an opportunity to jump the numbers up in Lummester and to be able to accommodate that housing that's needed. Being an MBTA community, it seems to, this seems to be, it's a unicorn, okay? It's not something that you are gonna run into all the time in projects throughout the city. This is a very unusual location, unusual site, and I think that the ability for the city to take advantage of this particular site in this particular manner, to get as many units as they can, and offset some of the areas where they maybe don't want is the large housing projects that might have more of an impact on the environment and on the direct effect than this would have, I think this is a great opportunity for the board to do that.
So, John, if I could...
All right, yep.
So, I agree with Mr. Bavensi, and this may be the first time in thirty years I agree with Mr. Hannigan.
Wait, you missed the last part. You missed the last part.
I agree with Mr. Hannigan, but I, because the way I see it, I mean, I think the planning board may have too much of a political approach on density. I see what you're saying, John, but I actually think, if, I actually think that Orchard Hill Park is much more, I'm gonna just say much more dense than what, than what Mr. Hannigan's proposing. Well, because they already have, it's already developed, and they're kind of like wedging in, like, three hundred-plus units, and these are fewer units, by the way, than Orchard Hill Park. So, and I, and I think...
I couldn't help but notice.
What's that?
There's no neighbors.
I know, and they got, it's a special permit, so they get notified. And, but the way I see it is, and plus, it's like a flat, I'm going to speak like in very general simplistic terms, it's a flat piece of land, I have, I'm sorry, I'm gonna compare it to Orchard Hill Park right now, because it's under, it's under the density requirements, but it's still really dense, as opposed to this project that's on a flat piece of land, the traffic isn't as controversial as it is there, it's, there's not, it's more business, I mean, I think if any place is gonna be probably denser than you want it to be, I think it should be in Business B, because there's no other residences around. And I'm assuming they've, I'm assuming they've satisfied any concerns that Mr. Frye has had, who's like the closest neighbor, I don't know, I'll wait for him to speak, but I actually am, and plus, and plus, there's no density in the area. You say it was a mistake, but was it a mistake? Or was it unintentional?
To the chair, density helps with sustainability, affordability, accessibility, and people always talk about, "Oh, who's coming into the city? What about the children of Lummester?" Like, the twenty-something-year-olds that live with their parents in Lummester, and they wanna stay in Lummester, and can't afford a house.
Yeah.
And could move into an apartment, and this density helps with that, and also because all the amenities and all the accessibility to services around that area, this is an urban, people get afraid of the term urban and cities, and we, this is a city, and to limit densities, as long as it's a good design and you're not putting people on top of people, and there's a lot of green space, there's a lot of outdoor amenities, there's plenty of room for snow, trash, and there's an entire building being rehabbed and upgraded to provide services for all these tenants. So it's like, we, honestly, we're limited by the height of the zoning that could maybe add another floor here, but I believe that, in my opinion, that this, this could be the future.
I'm not talking against the project, I think what you guys have done is a nice project, okay? It's, and it looks good, and I think it would probably work. What I'm saying is that it's such a departure from anything else in the city, and I'm saying that the city council, and we looked at it, and there was a number of places they wanted to, and there was a lot of discussion this summer or last summer about density, and what we did, and we went from basically eight to twenty, which was a huge jump for the city last summer, and now we wanna go almost, you know, so I'm sort of taking the input from the city council and the other people there, is that there were a lot of discussions around density, and nobody was happy with MBTA, that's only fourteen, okay? And here we're at thirty, thirty-plus, you know? So I'm just taking, I'm saying is, you know, the rest of the board is gonna have to vote on this, but this right now is a nice project, would it be a nicer project with a few less units?
And that's actually one of the points I wanted to touch on, was that...
Is there economically, is it economically feasible to go to smaller, less units? So, I mean, I don't know that.
A couple touches on that, because we talked about if we did, if we did drop units, what would the project look like? So if we dropped thirty units, would the project be any different? And the reality of it is, it would be the same exact footprint, but maybe we would not have all five-story buildings, maybe it would be something like that, but the shape and the layout of the parking, the driveway access, all the improvements that we needed off-site, all that stuff would still happen to be the same exact thing. The economic feasibility is where we're getting in, get into needing the additional units, in order to supply the parking that's being asked for, and we know it's kind of self-imposed because of the fact that you have fewer units, you need less parking, but there's no real number that makes dropping a number of units equal to the cost of a podium, for podium construction. Okay? So the cost of the construction of this type of building means you need to go up in height, okay? Going up in height means more units, you get to the point where you say, "Okay, now we have enough units within the building, how many parking spaces do we need?", and then we kind of balanced out the site from there. And then from there, your impact on the neighborhood, okay, which is something the special permit's supposed to be looking, what is it, what's the impact on the neighborhood? That's handled by the traffic analysis, and when the traffic, because that's really your, your two things in this product are drainage and traffic. Drainage has been reviewed and peer-reviewed, both by your peer reviewer and DPW, traffic has been reviewed by, you know, your peer reviewer, as well as police, fire, and the wire inspector who gets involved with a lot of the traffic signalization and towns. Okay? So all of those parties are on board with everything, that what we're doing for mitigation works. Okay? And so that's why we're saying that if it's gonna work, the last, I think the last T we had to cross and I we needed to dot was getting Mr. Frye's driveway access to his building in a better manner, which I believe we've achieved.
Can we, all right, so we know how everyone feels about, can we move on? And then we'll just vote when it's time to vote, if it's today or anything else.
Anything else to do? Are there outstanding items?
Well, we usually read the department head's comments. John, I'll do that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Board of Health, dumpsters must be on concrete pads, it must be enclosed, structures to be demolished, need asbestos survey, erosion survey for the health department. Assessor approves.
My revenue. Same bullshit.
Building approves. Fire approves. DPW always has a laundry list.
I remember there was a conversation about the sewer being undersized.
Right, right. The lines.
The drainage system, so...
Sixteen items.
So, a lot of those comments have already been addressed, specifically with the drainage. Some of the, what we're dealing with, with the stormwater ordinance, is the fact that there's not enough volume storage on the site for the phosphates. Okay? So, what we've agreed to as part of this is that we would do an off-site mitigation plan for those, and we're looking at doing something down at Fournier Park. We're working with DPW on that, as far as exactly what we do, we need to get out there and do an existing addition plan of that site, and then from there, figure out what type of mitigation we could provide for the existing parking lot that sheet flows off that area into the wetlands. We would put some sort of a detention basin or some sort of a basin in front of that to try to mitigate that, the impervious content of that that's going to the wetland now, and that's been principally agreed upon, but just exactly how it's created, that's how we would do that. So that's the information that's in there, probably about the drainage, that's all been addressed as part of the revisions we've made to the plan, et cetera.
Okay, and then, with regard to, yeah, stormwater, project is supposed to be constructed in phases which is allowed under the standards provided that the entire project is eventually constructed. If any of the phases are eliminated, the project will not be in compliance, and will likely require redesign by the engineer to demonstrate compliance. As mentioned previously, the off-site phosphorus mitigation pressures are not detailed, and the drainage report beyond the work will be coordinated with the Lummester DPW as part of the stormwater permit, quote-unquote. If the city considers that is a satisfactory approach, Tyne Barren does as well, but I wanted to at least mention it again to keep the issue on everyone's radar.
Correct.
And then, police.
This is all crosswalks.
It's, yeah, and I think, did we address all those when, all these, I just think it's kind of interesting that the police have more comments about your project than they did of, I hate to compare it to Orchard Hill, we just had it.
But it's all the crosswalks.
I know, but, all right, which we've addressed, so I'm not going to...
So, I guess the question is, have we addressed it? Our opinion is we would keep the crosswalks as shown on the plan, and I think that that's been substantiated by your peer reviewer. Are we all happy with that?
Are we all happy with that, with that crosswalk?
Well, well, see, I'm gonna have an issue with that because typically we have a condition that, that's, and then the condition that we say is that the, the department heads...
But sometimes we disagree with that condition and we strike them.
Yeah, but sometimes we disagree and we have a...
And this would be one we would strike because their plan makes sense.
Okay, and, uh, I don't know how we're gonna deal with the police department if they don't agree with it.
Well, I think you can rely on your peer reviewer.
We just, all department head comments and police, we're gonna minus the police department comments on location of the crosswalk.
I think we just, yeah, we're gonna defer to the...
Are there any outstanding issues?
We forgot the wire.
Yeah.
Is that the one?
July 17.
Is the wire about the GPS thing?
No, it's about the camera.
Part of it.
The camera?
Yeah.
I read that one for the other projects.
Yes, but it's for this one, too.
Just read it, yep.
I just wanna make sure we get the upgrades to the traffic light, a 360 camera, and a new fire GPS preemptive equipment. That's it.
She just read it.
It was one thing.
She just read it.
Great. Oh, he had the same thing for both. I see it. Okay. All right.
The camera's not an issue. What's the, what's the GPS thing?
It just says, we'd like to see the GPS fire preemption equipment installed.
Oh, with optical, yeah.
Yeah. They know what that is. Both, both our consultant and your consultant know what that is.
Are there any outstanding issues?
My, I, I, there's no outstanding, I just, how long would you anticipate this to take from racing buildings to opening day?
Approximately two to three years, depending on, um, I'll run a little bit.
Okay.
I don't know if they went into detail in the last time. I don't know if it's relevant, but these are gonna be modular construction.
Yeah.
So the site work is gonna be happening while the modules are being built nearby in New Hampshire, right over the border, by one of the partners in the project. So the, it, this will be as fast as possible to develop because of how the processes will allow for multiple things to be going on at the same time. Where the site's being done, the foundation's being put in, and the modules are being placed in a much quicker fashion and all done in factories nearby.
Are you building it in steps or are you building...
Phases.
Phases.
You gotta phase it.
Phase.
Phases, yeah.
Ironically, building three will be the first building that's built. Um, and that, then from there, um, it depends upon how the, the demolition of the old buildings goes as to where they're gonna do building one or building two next. But it's gonna be basically done, building three, then one of the two other buildings next.
Yeah, you never know what you're gonna find in...
Mr. Fry, have any of this in?
Yeah.
Just making sure he's all set.
We haven't opened up to the audience yet.
It's a little late. I'll try to be as quick as I can.
He's ready to eat once he goes to bed.
It's, uh, five, five months ago I started with this thing, and I was told, oh, we can't do that because of the grading, get the driveway. And here we are, five months later. And it fell together and we're doing the driveway the way I thought we should do it in the first place. It reminded me of, uh, back in 1985, I think it was Ken Healy told me that, uh, in Leominster, the impossible just takes a little longer.
Yeah.
Okay? Uh, the, the only, uh, I probably have a couple of concerns is still the, the, the entrance into Jimmy Exaros's property and those made, big buildings out back. Uh, more than once I've been on Lancaster Street and the truck trying to turn into the, into the warehouse is hung up because there's a car coming out the other way, and he can't make it. So, uh, that, that seems to be the only, the only thing that I, I worry about. Having driven one of those things once in a while, I know you can't fit him into any, any tight spots, but, um, uh, other than that, I, I think, um, I'm pretty, pretty well satisfied with, with it. And, um, I trust that they'll, uh, during the construction phase, they will make temporary connections for the underground utilities so that my tenants won't, you know, lose any time, business, and stuff like that. Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do I have anyone else in the audience which is to speak?
Thank you. Thank you for staying so late tonight. Um, my name is Steve Boucher, 210 Indian Hill Road in Groton, Mass. I was the original, well, my dad was the original owner of this property, bought it in 1995. It can be a quick history, it might be very quick. Um, our family's very proud of this property. When we bought it, when I went there with my dad, the first day we went to the property, it was raining out. It was raining hotter inside the building than it was outside. And I walked out and I said, Dad, are you crazy? Why are we buying this facility? It's completely rundown. We bought the facility upon his, I wasn't gonna tell him any different, um, and we continued to pour money into this property since 1995. We developed across the street. Those were vacant parking lots that came with the property. Um, our business has been in this community for 65 years. We've never left. We are very proud of this community. We're very proud to contribute to it. We always knew this property was gonna get redeveloped. He always told me that. Even upon his passing, before he passed on his deathbed, you're gonna redevelop that property. Someday it's gonna be something better than it is. This is that better than it is. It's very rundown. We patched it together. Um, I have my property manager in the, in the, in the, uh, audience. He daily goes out and repairs things with a crew, sprinkler pipes, all sorts of different things. So the building is gonna get raised, uh, it needs to be raised. And this is that better project, um, for the city that we hope will bring it to that next level, that corner of the property, of, of the city. We spoke to several neighbors, um, as you can tell, because there's none here tonight. Are you in support of this? Yes. Do you need us to go to the meeting? I don't think so. Um, they're happy to see us go as a construction company, and we try to even alleviate their, uh, concerns or address anything they have with our company being there. We know the density is, is there. We understand that, Mr. Chairman. Um, respectfully, we followed the zoning. We understand it's very dense. We need that density to pay the cost for raising the structures, redeveloping. This is a redevelopment of an existing site. Um, and I really appreciate your support in this project. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Second, have a motion made and seconded to close the open public meeting. Any further discussion? Here now, I'll call for the vote. A roll call.
Patrick, Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi. Caravatoreso.
Yes.
Tom Cargan.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Dean Valier, yes.
Wow. John Siza.
Yes. Motion carries, okay. Uh, 4.1, uh, 4, 641, continue open public meeting for special permit, 435-8, 481 Lancaster Street. Motion is in order.
Move to close the...
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Do I have any further discussion? Here now, I'll call for the roll call.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi, excuse, Caravatoreso.
Yes.
Tom Cargan.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Dean Valier from Block Island, yes.
John Siza.
Yes. A seven o'clock hearing. Open public meeting for site plan for 591-603 North Main Street, map 206, parcel 17-18, parking area for car dealership.
And thank you for your patience.
How you guys doing?
Do we have plans for that?
How did you get stuck on the back of this?
Well, buddy, but I'm enjoying it. I live in Leominster, so I love this. I think I know more of the building and all that. I own car dealership right now.
This is about combining two lots and painting parking?
Yes, um, yes. My name is Ray Mateo, and we have, um, 591 North Main Street in Leominster. Uh, my tenant rented out the lot next to me, my place, and he, he told me to come over here to let you know that we're still working to find a landscaping engineer. I guess we'll find one, but he, he need more time. I think we spoke to Lisa already about that.
So you wanna postpone till August?
So you continue?
We're looking, yes, we're looking at Lisa. Honestly, we're looking at Lisa 60 days because I wanna make sure that we don't wanna come back again to find everything.
Until September 15?
Yes.
At 6:30?
Okay. Uh, but should we, we're gonna go, okay. Okay, will this continue this to September 15 to 6:30?
All right. Yeah, yeah, and, yeah.
Yes.
But I'm doing, thank you guys, we'll be here.
You'll be the first one on that day.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll need a, uh, roll call on there.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi, excuse, Caravatoreso.
Yes.
Tom Cargan.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Dean, yes.
John Siza.
Yes.
And I move, please save the director's report.
What's that?
Thank you so much.
I don't know.
We're not done, we're not done. We have a couple of items.
We're gonna, we're gonna vote and...
Okay. I mean, it's A and R plans we did. Special permit.
Yeah.
Flood plane for 6877 Pleasant Street, map 14, parcel 933A, multifamily residential above floors with office on first floor.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve.
With all department head comments.
With, uh...
There weren't any.
Yeah, all, yeah. All department head, yeah, conditions.
Was a bit verifying before.
Okay.
There were no, there were no...
Any discussion? Here now, I'll call for the roll call.
Oh, Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Moving on to Pleasant Street.
Pleasant Street.
Yay.
Caravatoreso.
Yes.
Tom Cargan. Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Dean Valier, yes.
John Siza.
Yes. Site plan application, 86 Orchard Hill Park Drive, map 386, block four lots, one C, multifamily residential development has been continued. Site plan for 435-481 Lancaster Street, map 443, parcels one, two, two B, map 356, parcel 17, mixed use, multifamily development.
Okay, there were waivers requested.
Okay.
To remind you. There were two waivers requested. One is from section 22-13.2.6 and 22-62.3.1. Waivers requested from the special permit standards and from the site plan standards for residential development to provide a landscape plan prepared by a registered landscape architect. The second waiver was section 22-52.2.3. Waiver is requested from the parking design standards requiring a three-foot clearance from a column to maneuvering aisle or parking space in a parking garage under a building. And there's a justification. Do you wanna hear that, or are you satisfied?
Yeah, we discussed it.
Did you have a comment, Mr. Hannigan?
Just in case.
Okay. I make a, um, on the first waiver, I make a motion to approve the waiver.
Second.
A motion made to accept the waiver. Oh, on both of them or just one?
Landscape architect.
There's two.
On both waivers.
No, you should...
Just the one.
First, please.
Landscape. Okay, roll call.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
Caravatoreso.
Yes.
John, Tom Cargan. Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Dean Valier, yes.
John Siza.
Yes.
I make a motion to, um, approve the second waiver.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the second waiver, um, which was?
Parking.
The parking. Okay. Roll calls.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
Caravatoreso.
Yes.
Tom Cargan.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Dean Valier, yes.
John Siza.
Yes.
And I make, I make a motion to, um, approve the site plan with all department head, with conditions that all department head comments be met except for police, um...
Regarding the crosswalk.
Regarding the crosswalk, that we adopt what the, our, um...
Traffic engineer.
Our, our traffic engineer has proposed.
Second by sound.
I second, yep.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
Caravatoreso.
Yes.
Tom Cargan.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Dean Valier, yes.
John Siza.
Abstain.
Hi, can I just say one thing? I never thought, you know, at first the traffic... No, it's gonna take a second. I can talk. I always thought the park...
Motion carries.
The motion carries. Uh, the traffic would be an issue. Um, but I, I sat outside of Brooks Pond and I never, I never see any issues there at all. And there's a lot of traffic coming in and out of there, so good luck with that.
Come on, Sal.
I'm done. That's it. We're talking like it's six o'clock. So what? I'm here. What am I gonna do?
Special permit, 435-481 Lancaster, map 443, parcel one, two B, and map 356, parcel 17, mixed use, multifamily development.
Continued.
We just voted on this.
No, we didn't, no.
That's a special permit.
Oh, for the special permit.
This is, but that's site plan, this is special permit.
Special permit.
Okay, we have a...
Um, do we have to do the waivers again?
No.
No, we already did the waivers.
Waivers on site plan.
No, those were...
Motion to approve the special permit.
I think that's all we have.
Okay.
Motion, okay. Have a motion made and seconded to approve the special permit. Roco.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yay.
Caravatoreso.
Yes.
Tom Cargan.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Jason Parre, yes.
And then Jason Parre. I, I'm just keeping you awake. And John Siza.
Abstain.
Finally, one continued.
Still business, site plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
591-603 North Main Street, map 206, parcel 17-18, parking area for dealership, this has been continued. Bassett Street definitive subdivision, final documents released. The Covenant Homones Association, that's been moved out. Battery storage zoning amendment proposal, review rechanges into record, and then open discussion.
This is a long ordinance. I'm not gonna read it all, but...
We should digest that and talk about the next meeting.
Do you wanna put that on August?
Yes.
And move that to August?
Thank you, yep.
Move, move to August meeting.
How about the rest of the agenda?
Settling the need to comprehensive review of zoning regulations. Move that to August.
Yeah, I've been tasked by the mayor to do a comprehensive look at the zoning regulations and uses and use charts and all of that, a whole overhaul look. So I am looking for some wonderful planning board members who wanna work with me.